Good evening, welcome to our December 17, 2024 City Council Meeting. Right now is 7 o'clock on time, meeting is now in session. And tonight invocation will be led by traveling Kelly Dupie, pastor from the West Covina Police Department, and Mayor Pro Tem Lety Lopez Viado will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, tonight we come before you and we are so thankful to live or work in the great city of West Covina and to be a part of the United States of America. Father, we pray your blessing on this council meeting and that you would be with our leaders, Lord, that you would speak to them and give them wisdom and bless their decisions tonight. Fathers, well, tonight, God, we honor a great man in our community, Chief Richard Bell, upon his retirement, pray your blessing upon him and his family as he steps into this new season of life. Let him know, Lord, how much he is loved and appreciated by us, the citizens of West Covina. Lord, as well, God, tonight we lift up all who are serving out on the streets, watching over us and keeping us safe, God. Everybody in the police and fire departments, pray, Lord, that you would continue to bless them, give them success, Lord, and keep them safe. And thank you, God, once again for your presence here and your blessing upon this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Have a seat, please. Assistant City Roll Call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Yep. Okay, we don't have a closed session, so nothing to report out. And we are going to our presentation, and we have a couple presentations. So the first one, we want to have our beloved Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, final legislative update. And I think she has a video for us due to her physical condition, and I think she wants to give us some report and say farewell to West Covina. Now go ahead, please.
Hello, I am Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, proudly representing California's 31st District. It has been my distinct honor and the honor of my life to represent you and San Gabriel Valley in Congress for the last 26 years. I am so proud of everything we've accomplished together through my time, and I want to thank you for trusting me to be your representative. Thank you to all of you public officials throughout our communities for everything you do day in and day out, serving our residents. I was very pleased to help our citizens obtain over $95 million for just three years, fiscal year '22 to '24, through the community funding process, plus $25.5 million for the entire San Gabriel Valley region for the San Gabriel Valley Restoration Fund. This basin provides drinking water for over half of Los Angeles County, and continued effort dedicated to the restoration and cleaning of existing and emerging contaminants is vital to not only protecting our groundwater, but also reducing Southern California's reliance on costly imported water. Including the House's fiscal year '25 appropriations bill is an additional $7 million in funding for this project. Additionally, fiscal year '25 community project funding projects totaling $22 million were included in the House's 25-year probation bill for our great communities. House and Senate appropriators are still in the process of finalizing funding, and we will keep you updated on the process. Thank you again for allowing me to provide you with this end-of-the-year legislative update. Lastly, I want to thank my most wonderful, efficient, and dedicated staff, who are all still committed to public service. It has been our distinct honor and privilege to serve you in my entire district, our great state of California, and our beloved nation. We still have another month and the work to do, and I will give 100% every day fighting for our San Gabriel Valley in the United States Congress. From the bottom of my heart, thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you so much. And really quick, I want to thank our Congresswoman Grace for her service. Okay, I remember these nine years when I worked with her, she always pick up my phone when I call her. And then I say, "Hi, Grace," and she said, "What do you want, Tony?" I say, "And I need some money, Mom," okay, because city needs some funding. And she always tried to find the funding during the 2020 when I was mayor, and we need some kind of testing center due to we don't have any facility for that, and we want to use the CDBG fund. And Congresswoman, at that time, the city manager, they company, came to me and said, "Let's call Congresswoman and see if she can help us with CDBG fund." And I called her, she picked up the phone right away. I say, "Congresswoman, would you please help us? We need to use the CDBG fund using to pay ultimate to have a test center." And you know what happened? She said, "I will work on it." And she get it done, and we have a test center from Congresswoman, and we can right away service our resident in West Covina during the pandemic time. So I want to thank her service. She's so graceful and so approachable, and I hope all the future city, okay, and all the future congressmen, congresswomen, or senators, they are willing to pick up the phone from us to solve the problem in West Covina. So I want to thank sincere, okay, and appreciation to Congresswoman to serve West Covina for such a long time. And I don't know any other council member want to say something? Go ahead, okay, and Councilman Ollie Cantal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add my deepest appreciation to Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. When I came into office, she was just so receptive right away. And when I flew to Washington with literally less than 36 hours notice, she saw me right away. And she literally gave me, when I met with her, she gave me her personal cellphone, her home number. She said, "Anytime, call me." So she just was such a wonderful asset, and her years of service are to be remembered for a long time because of the ways that she has touched the lives of all of us here in her district. And we look forward, I'm just really excited in just looking ahead as we prepare for additional leadership with Gil Cisneros coming into office. And, you know, it'll be great for him to build on the legacy that Congresswoman Napolitano has left for all of us. And I just wanted to join with the mayor and really expressing my enthusiastic gratitude for her, for her service, for her being such a wonderful person, and for being an incredible example to all of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you, Councilman Ollie Cantal. Again, a few people at home or over here, all they can see, we have a beautiful Capitol, okay, and blanket hanging on the wall. That is the gift of our Congresswoman and departure gift, and it's so pretty. I know one of us, absolutely not me, we maybe one day go to the Capitol, we present this district. And so anyway, thank you so much. And any other city council want to say something? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say to Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, thank you for representing your district, for all the work you've done for the residents of West Covina and throughout the San Gabriel Valley. You are an icon, and your legacy will live on in this district. And thank you again for your kind video and all the hard work you've done throughout your tenure in the United States Congress. So thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Any other member want to give couple of, okay, no? Okay, okay, you want to just privately and call her and say thank you. But again, again, we want to wish her the best for retirement and good health and happy and always and anytime if she want to call us, we will pick up the phone for her. So thank you so much, Councilwoman Grace Napolitano. Okay, and next one, we are going to go to the sport league update. I think we have a new president. Is she here? Irma, Irma, would you please come to the front? We have a new president of the sport league, okay, and sport council, Irma Alterhout. Am I pronounced right? No? Oh. I practiced so many times, still get around, okay? Maybe you can introduce yourself, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Wu, city council members, and everyone in attendance. It is with great pride and excitement that I stand here today to introduce myself. My name is Emma Osterhout, the new chairwoman of the sports council. For those of you who don't know me, let me tell you a bit about myself. I was born and raised right here in West Covina. I'm a proud alumna of Mesa Elementary, Sierra Vista Middle School, and South Hills High School, proof that my roots run deep. I'm a mother of three very active boys who are currently part of multiple sports within West Covina. My husband proudly serves the West Covina Unified School District as a history teacher. I became the president of West Covina American Little League a year ago, and I've had so much fun in the position. Most importantly, creating a solid working relationship with the city. I was thrust into being the president and quickly realized how important it is for our rec sports to have a solid working foundation with the city. I'm hoping to keep that going and only make it stronger. I'm a firm believer of pride of ownership. To me, West Covina isn't just a place to live, it's home. And I'm not here just to maintain what's been built, my plan is to make it better. As chairwoman of the sports council, my vision speaks to equity, opportunity, and progress. With seven nonprofit leagues, I recognize with some parks thrive, others need a little more love and attention. My mission is to ensure that all leagues, all families, and all children have equal access to well-maintained facilities where they can feel safe, have fun, and create lasting memories. Most importantly, children have a place to go after school. Believe me, as a mother of three boys, they need to keep busy and keep them out of trouble. In closing, my goal is to strengthen the partnership between the sports council and the city so together we can provide our youth with resources and spaces they deserve. I'm happy to invite anyone who has questions, feedback, and commentary to speak to me directly. Thank you so much for your time, and happy holidays.
Irma, thank you so much, and you know, welcome, okay? I think you the fresh breeze, okay, and to join the team, and it's a tough job, but city need you, okay, and the children need you, okay? And the children play the sport need you. I think last time, I think a couple months ago, you have about 80 or 90 kids, we give out the certificate, and exactly, okay? That's the outstanding, and see all the happy children, and they really happy. And then now the league, okay, the council is under your watch, and we wish you the best. And I think we have our city staff, SUC and city manager, and we'll support you 100%. And if you need any support from us, we will support you because that is after-school program, and that is how we want to keep our children active, okay, and learn how to teamwork and how to face the future. Most important thing is the confidence. We want to build the confidence for them, and I want to thank you for willing to step up and to serve. And any council, any question? Go ahead, okay, Councilman Cantal.
It's not a question, but heartiest congratulations. You have been amazing for West Covina American Little League, and to see the way that you built and continue to build and the way you lead and inspire parents. For you to be chairwoman of this council, I am just exhilarated about it. Congratulations, and I know there's going to be a lot of wonderful, there are going to be a lot of wonderful things ahead, Emma.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And any other, okay, Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yeah, well, congratulations on being the new council president. And, you know, it's so warming to know that the council is being led by an active parent, and for you to be a mom and have kids and have a, to have one of our teachers, history teacher also, you know, it's remarkable for you to have that dedication and that passion to give back to this community. And just like the mayor said, we have so much to bring to this community, and so much is to come. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and keeping close contact. We will always, okay, and one phone call away. If you need anything to support from us, please call us, contact us. And I think city will 100% support you, and this is such a needed, okay, organization from you to make sure that everybody can have a fair chance to play. Thank you so much, welcome, I appreciate. Okay, we go to the next presentation, and this one is Chinese American Association of West Covina, CAWC, going to donate under two agency. The first one is Mr. Martinez, is Mr. Martinez over here? At the school, the middle school? Is, I know they have a school meeting today. It's a, okay, but it's okay. Can we have, maybe, is Mr. Martinez here?
Yeah.
Huh? Mr. Martinez, hey, you made it, okay? Otherwise, you won't get the money. You show up, you get the money, okay?
Testing.
And Mr. Martinez is Holland Crest Middle School Band, okay? And they have always outstanding performance and just have a tree lighting event. And he with his band and doing such a wonderful job. And so, and then right away, CAWC told me, okay, they want to donate to your band and to help you with continue to recruit more student to have this band in music because sport is one thing our children need, music is another thing. And then my daughter was in the band, okay, and while the band, South Hill High School, so we know how important for the kid, okay? And you want to say something, introduce your band and to recruit more people? You are outstanding teacher, and I saw you so many years make the thing happen, go ahead.
Well, thank you, thank you so much for the support, and thank you so much for the donation. You know, it's a, it's a community, it's a community group that, you know, what's the, what is the saying that I'm looking for? It takes a village, so to speak, yeah. Yeah, and all of the things that we get to do in our music program and all the things that arts teachers get to do in the arts are only possible when there's community buy-in. So anything like this is certainly treasured. We have a big slate of events that we want to do in the spring. We're going to take our kids to Disneyland in February to do a performance there. We got some festivals that we do throughout Southern California. Just as important, we want to get them ready for the high school band and the high school experience where they travel all over the place. So all of those experiences take the resources, and we appreciate the help. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and that's why it's so important for you taking all these children and with band, and they perform, and did you see how proud, how confident they are? Okay, and I remember my kids always running around with the practice, and moms always, okay, so-called the band moms, okay, and they follow the band all the time and help out. And I just have to write the check every year to donate. And here, right now, is the CAWC turn to donate the money, and maybe have the CAWC introduce yourself and see how much money you want to donate. Hopefully, it's not a couple hundred dollars, hopefully, it's a little bit higher.
Good evening. Thank you so much for, we have a great opportunity to donate the money for Holland Crest Band. So my name's Angel Chu from Chinese American Association of West Covina. We are honored to donate $1,000 to the Holland Crest Middle School. And we are really appreciate you guys did a really great job for our city and also music and dance bridge of the connect of the world, of the language. That express the culture, the mentor's note to the band and the wonderful step of the dance through only for the demonstrate for the young people love for the art, but also make our community more colorful, diverse, and united. So right now, today is, we present for $1,000 to Holland Crest. And thank you so much, we appreciate for you guys have done a very good job in our community. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I know you have another check, so you guys have to open your wallet again, so have a seat. Okay, and, but thank you, okay? I hope, and we will continue to support your kid, okay? Thank you so much. Yes, it's a village to raise our kids, so we teach everybody to pitch in to help each other. Thank you so much. And the next one, I want to invite our beloved Florrico International. Would you come up? Okay, and this group is from West Covina, the children from West Covina, they continue to carry on the most magnificent, okay? The director's right here, I'm looking for all the places, okay? And they are the most magnificent, keep the culture together. And you wanted them to kind of give us some performance, and you want to introduce them, and how you always keep this cultures, and we want to be proud, everybody proud about their inheritance, okay, and their cultures, and you continue to bring this together. Okay, you want to introduce your team and your studio?
Of course, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you, everyone, for being here today. This is a very important day for us, not only because we represent our city, West Covina, our mayor, thank you, and obviously our culture. And we try our best to take the kids out of the streets, and I want them to learn the beauty of what it is, not only just our culture, but dance overall, fine arts, it's beautiful. And I think some of you agree with me. And last year, we represent our community in the city. Thank you to the community of West Covina and to you. We went to New York City representing my community, which is West Covina, and we danced at the Times Square and also in one of the big shows on Broadway for the first time, yes. So for the first time, we had a big event over there. This year, our goal is to go to London, so we're heading for London and taking my group. And all the donations that we get through all the community goes to their customs. And as you could see, the beautiful customs, for example, like the gentleman, which is my child back there, just that one itself is about over $300. So everything that comes to us, and with the money that we don't, you guys donated last year, we bought 12 dresses for the community, for the, yes. And I mean, I'm so proud to be part of my, my city, my community. And obviously, thank you, everyone, thank you, muchisimas gracias, thank you again, sir. Mayor? Oh, of course, okay, vámonos, dice así. We have Cal State LA, Citrus College, West Covina High School, and Holland Crest Middle School. Te rajes, Jalisco. Échale. Thank you. And the last song will be Harabe Tapatio. And really quick, we have Mari. Mari just came from Hawaii, from the University of?
Hawaii Pacific.
And what's going to be next?
I'm transferring to Cal State LA, and then from there, I'll be joining the Florico team.
There you go. What's Florico do?
I currently attend Cal State Fullerton, it is my third year. I'm a kinesiology major, and I'm a part of the Florico group on campus.
So they have Florico all the universities, and you, Mija?
I attend Mount SAC, I'm a first year. My major is kinesiology and nursing, and I'm currently also a part of one of the coaches at the group.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director. You can see a proud children we have. You want to have more?
It's okay.
Okay. I heard about, okay, this gentleman is what's?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-seven.
Wow.
Wow. Okay, she has a free sign up for anybody want to be young like him, okay? Throw in the dance group, I'm going to sign up, okay? So I want him, okay, young, okay? So thank you so much, and wonderful, and CAWC, would you come up to have your sponsorship for they go to London? And again, again, this is a, okay, village to raise our children together. And different, we have a Chinese group to support our Mexican culture. I think this is showing the unity altogether and how we connect to each other and help each other. But thank you so much, go ahead.
Okay. We are such a great honor to present the check for them for $1,000 tonight. I would like to thank you all, the prettiest girl and the team. They do a very hard working for the culture and the art. Let us give them a run of the path, okay? And support for the talents, young people, young girls, to hope they will have a more opportunity. to hope they will have a more opportunity to support these meaningful cultures in the future. So we present for the, from CEWC, we present for $1,000 for this team. Wish you have a great trip.
I'll be honored to represent there all of you in London. Thank you so much, God bless you.
Thank you so much. And when you in London, don't forget to send the picture to us. We're gonna post our website. Okay, yes. Thank you, director, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, beautiful dancing and continue. And they've been regular showing all the CT program from the Spring Festival to the Moon Festival. And we see our director and, okay, our Rico always over there to support the city. But thank you so much. Thank you, CEWC, thank you so much for your generosity, okay? And let's keep on going, get more money so to donate to our children, okay? Thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, and the next one, we're going to, okay. What, okay, retirement. Retirement. Resolution of commendation for retired fire captain Todd Smith. Our, our, our acting chief Brown, you want to have? Todd, you are too young to retire. We worked together for nine years, remember, okay? And then I cannot believe you want to retire today. Okay, so but, but congratulations, you deserve it, okay? You're working so hard, I've been working with you all the time. When you work with FFA and you say, Tony, let's have a meeting. And we have meeting for time to tell, listen to your rent, okay? But you try to make our department better, okay? And that is how you can see all the brothers and sisters, they love you because you make our department great. I don't want to talk more because chief want to say something. Acting chief, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, city council, city manager, staff, and everybody in attendance today. Captain Todd Smith has hung up his turnout coat and officially retired from the West Covina Fire Department on June 7th, 2024. Captain Smith had begun his career with the West Covina Fire Department on June 16th, 1991, as a firefighter paramedic. On January 31st, 2001, he was promoted to the rank of fire captain, which he held for 23 and a half years. Todd spent a total of 33 years proudly serving the citizens of West Covina. When Todd was hired, he was hired as part of the Magnificent Seven, a group that was hired to open the second paramedic rescue in the city, the first time the department had hired outside paramedics. Of the seven, Todd is the last to retire. During Todd's tenure, he spent 23 years at Fire Station One, which is our busiest fire station, and he did that by choice. Todd was an active member of the department. He coordinated the auxiliary program, was a paramedic coordinator, trained the department members and new hires in forcible entry, taught CPR, and coordinated our fire service day. In addition to his department duties, he was also an active union member, which Tony alluded to, in which he held the position of board member, union president. He negotiated six labor contracts that covered 21 years. Todd has been recognized for his service on several occasions, receiving the department's Meritorious Awards and Life Saving Award. Now, besides that, I've got one little fun fact that I know everybody in the department knows, but none of you know. I don't know who's manning the Christmas lights tonight. Fun fact about Todd, he's well-known amongst every member of the department that he loves the Christmas season. Todd takes great pride in decorating his house at Christmas. Clark Griswold has nothing on Todd. The display got so big that he had to install a separate electrical sub panel just for his Christmas lights. In 2018, the Smith family appeared on the TV show The Great Christmas Light Fight.
Oh, wow.
Todd, it's been a pleasure working with you. You're one of my mentors coming up through the department. I'd like to congratulate Todd Smith on his retirement and wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors.
Captain Smith, okay, and you want to say something? You want to give them the mic? Okay, since the kind of farewell, okay, you don't call me anymore, okay? Maybe call me in front of fish. Fishing trip, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate the kind words from Chief Brown and all the support from the members here and all the support from the city. I had a great 33 years here, it went very fast, I enjoyed every day. Never had a day that I came in that I was upset to come to work. I love coming to work, I love serving the community. I love to working with all the people I worked with. And I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight, thank you.
I remember when you have meeting with me, you speak much more than this. You have, okay, a lot of agenda, I said, Tony, let's go through this, okay? But you're so dedicated and really, for 33 years, okay, working for the city of West Covina, we thank you, okay, cannot thank even more because there's longevity of a service to our fire department and to make our fire department such a proud agency. And right now, you can see all the brothers and sisters in the fire, they're very, very proud about, okay, and we are going to do even more, okay, to build the Fire Station One, the brand new. And then the people can see they're beautiful, hopefully, come back to see. Okay, let's, we're gonna put a, okay, and all this decoration, the flag right at the corner, hopefully, that everybody can come in to see the first thing, our station number one, okay? I think this will be beautiful. But again, that is all from your hard work and put it together. So represent, West Covina, we have a couple of certificate for you. And then, okay, let me go to the first one, okay? The first one from city of West Covina, for your longevity, 30 years of service of a great city of West Covina, thank you so much, okay? And we, don't be a stranger, come back to see us. And I know you were, your friends over here. And another resolution for your retirement, we don't want to see you go, but hey, it can never end, it's always have, okay, the party must over sometimes, okay? It's 33 years of a party, that's a long party, okay? So thank you so much for your, okay, service and this is, okay, a resolution for your retirement. Thank you so much for your service. You want to introduce your family? Your family? Let's bring your family over here.
Yes.
Family?
There sitting is my mother-in-law.
My mother-in-law. Come on. Come on, come on, hey, you only do this one time, you only retire one time, okay? Don't miss the chance.
My mother-in-law, Paul.
Paul, Paul, come in. What? Come in, come in, come in. Yeah. Heather, you want to say something? I'm not a speaker either.
That's not true.
I just pretend I can talk, okay?
Just thank you very much for everything. He's sad to go, but it's been a good 33 years.
Okay. Always a great man, my wife just left, okay? But all the great men behind you, always a great woman, okay? So thank you so much, Heather, to let him serve city for 33 years and always like overnight this and that. And mother-in-law and mom, dad and mom, thank you so much to support him to continue to work for us for 33 years. And but time to say goodbye and don't be a stranger. And here, we have another gift for you, only for the retirement person, okay? Oh, it's called the street named Smith Bolivar. And this, this only for the retirement, okay? And so, so that only the high glory for our city put a street sign for the person. But thank you so much for your service for 33 years and hopefully see you again, again, come back to give us advice and this and that, thank you. We have, hold on, I think we have all the legislators, senator and?
Yes, we have some legislative reps, Carla Cardenas and Abel Casanova.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, city staff, community members. My name is Carla Cardenas. I'm here on behalf of state Senator Susan Rubio to congratulate Captain Todd Smith for your career. So if I may, I'll present the certificate of recognition on behalf of the California State Senate and your Senator Susan Rubio. It's her honor to congratulate you upon your retirement from the West Covina Fire Department. Thank you for bravely serving, bravely answering the call to serve. Our shared constituents are incredibly fortunate to have had you for 33 years. Your commitment to the safety of the city of West Covina has proven invaluable to our community and the department. We wish you the best as you embark on your next journey. Congratulations. Dated December 17th, 2024, even though you already retired. And signed, Senator Susan Rubio. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One more, Abel Casanova.
One more. Good evening, everyone. My name is Abel and I am from the office of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. And on her behalf, we are very privileged and happy to be here to congratulate you on your retirement. And we know that you've been serving the city for many years. And we also have a token of recognition on behalf of the Assemblywoman. And this is on, it says, "On behalf of the California State Legislature and the residents of the 48th Assembly District, I commend you for dedicating 33 years of service to the city of West Covina. Your commitment to promoting safety in our neighborhoods and improving the quality of life for residents is admired by many. Congratulations and best wishes on your retirement."
Okay. Thank you so much, Captain Todd Smith. Okay, thank you so much, don't be a stranger. I waiting for your phone call. Call me, okay? Next one, I'm going to have our chief Belle. You know, Chief Belle, it's not fair, okay? When I was the mayor 2020 and you helping me and doing through the pandemic and now mayor again, and you want to say goodbye to me. Okay, so, so, but, but, but I want to say this, okay? It's a, it's an honor, it's a pleasure, it's a privilege to work with Chief Belle. And quickly, I want to give some history, since I've, okay, been elected, okay? Since 2015, I worked with him, okay? And he was a captain that time, okay? And then in 2018, I say, why don't you apply when we have a vacancy? But he say, not ready. But 2019, when city in trouble and Chief Belle stepped up. And this time, and she took this opportunity and, and duty and obligation and a tough job and to put everything on his shoulder to make sure our police department, one of the, one of the most important beside the police and fire, okay? And to make sure our PD can serve, can react to any emergency, any issue and to protect our resident in West Covina. Okay, 2019, he stepped up and he went inside. And you cannot believe it, how he is such a showtime, okay? To make our PD united again. Okay, they suddenly, finally, they find their sense of purpose to serve, okay? And before, there's a lot of turmoil and all this, okay, because the leadership. But with his leadership, right away, everything come together. He's outstanding leader, I work with him firsthand, so I understand how great this man is. And now I'm mayor, finally, the second day, and he say goodbye. So maybe it's me, okay, maybe, maybe it's me, okay? But, but the point is, okay? And in 2020, when I become a mayor and the pandemic happened. And that time is such a, we don't know, it's the first time we face a pandemic. And that is such a crisis and we worry and it's so such, it's not fair. Why I become mayor, I become pandemic. Everything get shut down, the people looking for PPE, looking for food. And, and our chief step up to make sure our city is safe. And that time have a riot, this and that going on like crazy. And we, West Covina, is one of the safer city at that time. Even here, another thing, last year, 2023, Forbes Magazine put West Covina is a safer city number three nationwide for the population more than 100,000. Let's give him a hand. If you say, are you sure, Tony? I say, yes, Google it, okay? Google it, okay? 2023 safer city, West Covina, number three. So, so because the hard work, because our brother and sister in the police department and they sacrifice and they make sure we are safe. So I want to thank Chief Belle, okay? And I know he going to retire, he going to fishing too, okay? Or something, or football, okay? So, or coached, okay? But, but I want to wish you the best, okay? And I don't want to model over here, but I just cannot let you go, okay? Like I don't want to let go. But the thing is like, we have to say goodbye and, but don't be a stranger like Todd, okay? You, anytime, come to the city, you can be our advisory, okay? And help us, okay? And we always will miss you. But more important thing, we want you to say something. And this, right now, it will be on the tape, okay, on the YouTube forever. So you better say something nice.
Well, first of all, good evening, council, staff, members, community, and those that are viewing. It's, it's been an honor to serve. Let's start with that. I do want to say, actually, before I get started, outside, right in the terrace area, my wife and her partner put together a nice little, little thing out there. And I didn't get a chance to acknowledge Carrie, is she here? She might be out there, but it was a wonderful job they did out there. And when I initially started to do this, I really didn't want to do it because I didn't want this to be about me. I've always wanted to be about us, right? That's, that's how I'm built. This isn't us, like we need to do this together. But I want to start out by saying thank you to the council. I know not everyone sitting up here today was here when I, when I got chosen a few years back, but a few of you were. And to me, you, you, you gave me a chance and it afforded me an opportunity to step forward. I can't thank you enough for that, even in my uncertainty of whether I can actually last as long as I did. I just knew I had to do it. It couldn't have come without a little push and a little support. Everyone needs that, they need to know that they're, that they're needed and wanted. And I actually felt that at the time. I knew our department needed it and I did not want to see it fall or falter. And I felt like if I could step in there and help out in any way, then that's what I'm gonna do, even if it only meant a year. Here we are almost six years later and I get to walk out on my terms. And I'm, I'm really thankful for that. I want to say thank you to all those chiefs that came before me. And the reason I say that is because it's an opportunity to learn from those before you, right? The good and the bad, right? Some, some things were good, some things were great, some things weren't so good. And I got an opportunity to see that. And so when I stepped into the role, I already had an idea of kind of what I wanted to do and I started doing it, right? And for the most part, it worked. And if it didn't, don't tell me till I'm gone. But I want, I want, I want to thank that. I also want to thank the lawyers that I got a chance to work with. I was in a lot of assignments, worked at school, resource officers, but my, I'm gonna say my best assignment was in the detective. was in the detective bureau. And because I think that's where I finally found me, I found my niche, right? I got in there, and I got to do something. I got to kind of have to really use my own wits and my own thing to really make this thing happen, and the department embraced me, and that really felt good at that time. But I got a chance to work with some wonderful lawyers, and they helped me along the way. You wouldn't believe what a deposition will do to you. If anybody here has ever been through a deposition, you think it's fair, and you think it's gonna be in your favor, and it's not always that way, right? You sit there and you're getting grilled and all that, but I know some of the lawyers have gone young. I know, I never had to work with Tom in that way, but, but I just want to say thank you because they helped you through it. I want to say thank you to all those court administrators that helped me through it. I want to say thank you to all of those mentors. This is going back to the sergeants, corporals, everybody that I worked with before that actually gave me guidance and help to move forward. I want to say thank you to those individuals. I want to say thank you to the department heads that I work with right now. We actually became pretty good group. I loved hanging out with you guys. It felt more like a family. We could throw things on the table, we could discuss it, we could talk about it. I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you gave me an opportunity to have a say. And I think you actually listen sometimes. So I'm actually happy about that, right? I wasn't always right, though. But I do thank you. I want to say thank you to all the departments. It was a pleasure to work with you. To my staff at the Police Department, the unsung heroes, our non-sworn staff, I want to personally say thank you. These are the folks behind the scenes. These are the folks that don't, you don't see, they gotta get the paperwork in, they work tirelessly, they're making the things happen, they keep the functioning going, from records to CSOs, to cadets, to our, our IT folks, our dispatchers. These are those folks that you just, sometimes you only know them by their voice, but it takes an entire village to make this thing work. And I want to say personally, thank you. If you don't ever hear it from me again, everybody that's in a non-sworn position, thank you, thank you, thank you. To the men and women that actually are seen out in the street, all of my officers that I started out with, promoted up with, hired. I think I've hired probably eighty percent of this department now, maybe. There's only a few that I, that I didn't actually hire. I want to say thank you because, you know, our job is to serve this community, and that's all I wanted to do was serve the community. But I couldn't do it without you. So this was never an "I," it was a "we," it was an "us." But you guys made it happen. That, that article? Where's Mayor Wu? I, I don't know where the article come from, but I could tell you this, crime is down in West Covina. We got the stats to prove it. Crime is down from last year and the year before, and I'm, and I'm proud of that. Are we, have we solved every crime? No. But I can tell you, we're working hard, and we've done some really good things. And I'm proud of the men and women that wear our uniform, that go out there and are putting their best foot forward. I want to say thank you to you guys. I've said it once, I'll say it again. When you walk into that lobby, you may see my face, but it's them that's doing the work, right? And that's what you judge us by, right? It's the contacts that you have out the field. When someone comes in and says, "West Covina was wonderful. I had a great contact." It wasn't me. I haven't driven black and white in a long time, all right? But it was them. And I want to say thank you, thank you to you guys. And there's a few things that I, I want to do. Let me have my family come up here. My uncle, come on, you're part of family. Farwood and Marcy, they actually live in the city. They're citizens here. Been here since I started. Wonderful. I am. This is the clan. This is the crew. All right. This is my family. This is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna do it this way. This is Daylin. This is, this is Nicholas. This is my firstborn. This is my daughter. I, I have to give her a special acknowledgement. Can you please clap for her? The last time I was up here, she couldn't make it because she was at work, and I totally forgot about her. I don't know how she was first. I don't know. But this is, this is my love here. This is my son, Jared. My son, Brandon. This is Monica Irwin. I'm on Marcy. I want to say thank you. Before I do what I'm about to do, but can I have Catherine come down? You see, when you're at the top and you're the chief, there's not a lot of folks that you can have a conversation with. And a lot of times, we have those conversations with other chiefs. Some of you have heard me say that already. It's, it's good because you got other chiefs that you can talk to. But when I'm not with those other chiefs, you need somebody to talk to. Come here. This young lady right here, Catherine, she is my secretary. She has been with us for five, six years now. Not all with me. I wasn't a chief when she first got hired, but certainly my whole, well, actually, not too far, right? Just about. Just dynamite, a pleasure, wonderful. I, I, I'm gonna say it. She's underpaid. I'm telling you right now, she has been there, especially in those times where I've had to make very difficult decisions, and I had no one else to vent to. Just so you know, I don't share everything with my wife because I try to protect her. But there are times where I have to do things, and she's been there the entire step of the way. And Catherine, I cannot say enough. I actually have something for you. I stated this out there, you can't do this job without having strong support. This is my support. No one has supported me more than my wife here. We've been married for thirty-five years now, and it's, it's been wonderful. But we, we decided that we were gonna do this together, the entire step of the way. And she's been with me the entire step of the way. Very, very powerful woman. She, she prays for me. She, we pray together, you know? But she supports me. And she tells me what to do. I'm just playing. But I cannot say enough about her. I want to say thank you for being there for me, with me, with us. We have the whole family. Thank you, guys, for the whole support. Anything that I missed, I'm saying I apologize now. And my, my other daughter can't be here, my son's wife, because she's home with my little guy. He's three. I wish he could have been here because he'd have stole the show. I'm telling you right now, he would have stole the show. But he's not feeling well, so we decided to keep him home. But I would like to acknowledge him as well. But honey, I got something for you as well. So, so with that, all of the citizens that did more than just be a citizen here, I mean, like, you pitched in, you helped, you donated, you participated, national night out, red ribbon rallies, festivals, anything like that, that's what makes the community stronger. Fourth of July, any of those things. I encourage it. Let's keep it going. West Covina is not dead. It is not gonna die. West Covina is gonna be stronger, and we're gonna keep forging forward. It is just my time to step off the train, and I'm doing it with grace. And I want to say thank you for allowing me to, to, to lead West Covina for these past six years. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. Okay, you, you are the great leader. Okay, West Covina owe you so much because you stepped in, okay, and stepped up, okay, during the two thousand nineteen, okay? And you can see, our department right now is very, very strong, and very united, okay? And, okay, I know you and me like to talk, but I want to give the chance to family. Any family member want to say something about your spouse or your father? Okay, maybe wife want to say something? Any great man behind always have a great woman. So, 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 want to say something?
I just, I just want to thank everybody in West Covina, as he said, from the staff to the families, to the council, to everyone who had his back for the years that he's been here. Thirty years, and we're so proud of you for all that you've done in every station that you worked for. God just kept promoting you and promoting you. But I just thank you because you did everything in excellence. So, once again, thank you. We will miss you all, but it's time for him to be home with the grandbaby.
I, I think somebody want to speak something. The wine is very emotional. Okay?
I'm crying because my mom's crying, and you actually did a very good job. But yes, my dad worked long hours, especially when we were younger. And we, I remember from him being promoted at San Marino from his graduation, and God has truly had his hand over him. And I thank God that he was able to bless this city as much as he blesses our family. He loves hard, he works hard, and just to be able to watch him in this light and be a leader is definitely what I look forward to when I find a partner or when my boys grow up or when my nephew grows up. And I just thank you guys for, like my mom said, always having his back and pushing him towards the top and being there for when he needed, especially Catherine. Because I know that my dad did lead on her a lot, and it's been a pleasure to watch you. It really has. And I thank you for paving the way for us, and we appreciate you, and we love you, and we hope that anything that he has taught everybody, that you guys are able to take that with you and move forward and just keep making this city great.
Thank you so much. Okay, really appreciate. You can see, you have all the love, okay? You're a lucky man with all the person love you and the city love you too. But thank you so much. Any other people want to say something? Hey, going one, going two, going, but, 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 okay, I think want to give a chance, Council, okay, they want to say something to, okay, like, okay, they're coming about to work with you during this time, okay? And, but again, again, you are a great leader. We really appreciate your service. Thirty years and twenty-six year in West Covina. So really serving West Covina, most of your service, okay, and, and from sergeant, okay, officer, sergeant, and move out to become our leader, our chief, and make our department united together and to serve. I think most important thing, leadership, leadership. So, City Council, you want to say something? Anybody want to go first? Okay, who want to go first? Go ahead. Okay, and Mayor Poten, you go first.
I just want to say, Chief Bell, you have been such an amazing person to work with during this whole time, especially in regards to public concerns, public safety, you know? I do remember that whole time of the defunding police movement, you know? And I'm glad majority of the council was not for it, and we worked with you during that whole time. We're like, we're not having this rioting here. We're not dealing with all this stuff. We're not bending down to all these things that, so, I'm so happy that, you know, we moved forward with that. You know, under your leadership, your commitment, you had made a strong PD, a united PD. Granted, I was here prior, you know, I've seen the changes. When the police was attacked, you, you brought community policing here with us. You know, the things that I had mentioned of what I wanted to see in the police department, I wanted to thank you for implementing those things. You know, with, like, the social media, how we highlighted PD in a positive way and, you know, show them in action of not just what people perceive. So you, you pushed that, you got that going. The biggest thing is, you know, I kept saying we need to highlight our PD, and you were the driving force behind that. And, you know, having that annual brochure, it was beautiful. I mean, it was better than what the city put together, but your department, your, the whole thing that it shows what the PD does, because I know sometimes we get where they said, "Oh, PD does nothing." They're just in their car having donuts or whatever, you know, just all these things. But this brochure that you created showed all the hard work, all the things that PD does, plus the statistics. So that was really great, that was, that occurred under your leadership. The biggest thing, you know, with crime, the flock camera. So I'm super happy that you were able to implement the flock camera. You know, we had, you know, you're there for all the events. I know you even come over to your house and, you know, for Fourth of July, all these holidays, national night out. You're always there for the people. You always listened. You were just amazing overall. I do thank you for always protecting the kids and the school. You know, when we had these active shootings and, you know, when the, the, the schools, the families were scared, you comforted them, you, you know, you, you talked to them, you, you helped them, and you kept them safe. So you kept the community safe, you kept the residents safe, kept the council safe. You kept everyone safe. And that was all through your leadership. You're just amazing. So I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, and we will miss you. You're, you know, we're just very proud of you, proud of all your accomplishments. And, you know, to the family, thank you. I know it's not just he, who sacrificed, but the family, thank you for your sacrifice, and thank you for sharing him with everybody, you know, with all of us. So I just want to thank you all, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor Poten. And next, we go to Councilman Kento. You want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For all the time that I end up serving in office, you will always be my first police chief. I, I am so appreciative to you for all that you do. And the thing is, what I especially am grateful for isn't just your personal accomplishments, but for what you have done to plant seeds everywhere. The imprint of your personal vision and your spirit of teamwork and solidarity and strength, it is ingrained and infused in this department because of your being here for, and being a part of West Covina's police force for a generation. With the number of people who are now aboard here, who are part of our police force, who I believe to be the best police force around, that is a credit to you. Because what you do is you cultivate others to serve as leaders in their own right. I remember once we had a talk about how there are people who you mentor within the, the force, and I just keep thinking about how tonight, all of them not only get to celebrate with you and all of us here, but they get to pick up and continue building on everything you taught them as they rise in leadership the way that you taught them to do. You are a person, Chief, who empowers people at a personal level. You, you really instill a lot of pride among the rank and file and among the, the leadership team that you put together. You work in close partnership with us, and all the while, Chief, you do it with such heart. And for, for us to have been able to benefit in this city for all of these years because of you, it's just such a blessing. And, and I wanted to add my appreciation to your family as well. I mean, they're lucky, and especially now, they get to have you all the time, and they'll get to be around you, and you'll get to do just even more wonderful things and build together. And I just am so grateful that of all the people in the world who could have been police chief when I came around, I have you to, to remember as my, the first example of what it means for a police chief to be a man of vision and of strength and of fortitude and of courage and of unity, and you are just amazing. So I just want, I'm just so appreciative to you for all that you've done. Thank you, and we will continue to build on your legacy, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Kento. Now, it's nice. Go to our Councilwoman, Diaz, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Bell, it has been an honor and a privilege to be able to work with you and talk with you and communicate with you, you know, personal things and, and work things. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for your service, and thank you for your leadership. And I want to thank your family as well. Thank you so much for sharing him with us. He's been a great person, and we really appreciate him, and we're gonna miss you. And, but I understand, and I really, I'm really happy that I feel that you're very blessed to have your little grandbaby that you'll be able to hang out with. And so I just want to wish you well in any of your endeavors, and God bless you and your family.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Diaz, okay, next one, we go to our newly-elect, okay, Councilmember Gutierrez. Go ahead.
Yes. Well, I wrote, I wrote a speech. Before I get to that speech, I just want to say, Chief Bell, and I think today, you know, Before I get to the speech, I just want to say, Chief Bell, and I think today, you know, we, we honor your legacy and your leadership, but we also honor today the men and women of law enforcement, the ones that wake up every day to protect our community. And, you know, before I begin on this speech, I just want to take a moment to thank all the men and women of the West Covina Police Department, our firefighters, our associations. Without them, I would not be here today. And the residents of West Covina's District One spoke and they said, and they said, and they said it very clear, they support the men and women of the West Covina Police Department. And I'm gonna, no, go on to my speech. Today, today we gather to honor a true hero, a leader who has exemplified the highest standards of integrity, honesty, and dedication in law enforcement. Chief Richard, Chief Richard Bowe, as you embarked on a new chapter in your life, we celebrate your remarkable career with the West Covina Police Department and the City of West Covina. Chief Bowe, you have been a shining example of what it means to serve and protect a community with unvailing commitment. Your leadership has inspired those around you to uphold the principles of justice and equality, to defend the law without fear or favor. Throughout your tenure as our police chief, you have set a standard of excellence that will endure for years to come. Your legacy is not just in the titles you held or the accomplishments you achieved, but in the lives you have touched and the hearts you have impacted. Your dedication to the residents of West Covina, your tireless efforts to keep our streets safe, and your unfettering resolve to uphold the values of justice and fairness have left an indelible mark on this community. As you retire from your position, Chief Bowe, know that your legacy will live on in the hearts of all those who have had the privilege of working alongside you. Your leadership, your integrity, and your reverent commitment to the well-being of this community has set a high standard for all who come after you. On behalf of the residents of District One and the entire city of West Covina, I extend my deepest gratitude to you, Chief Bowe. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for being a true hero in our midst. May your retirement be filled with joy, peace, and fulfillment. And may you always remember the lasting impact you have had on the lives of so many. Congratulations, Chief Bowe, and best wishes for your future. Thank you, Chief Bowe. God bless and may God continue to bless the men and women of the West Covina Police Department. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you so much, okay, and Councilmember Gutierrez, kind word, okay, I thank you, Council, to give our beloved chief, okay, all this beautiful speech. And I think times for us to present the certificate for you, okay, and we miss you. We don't want to let you go. We want to let this last longer, but, okay, we still have a show going on. So, so we want to make sure you have all your proper certificate. And the city council, you want to come down with me to, I know you want to share this time with our chief Bell. And the first thing I want to, okay, and present to you is, thank you so much to serve West Covina for 26 years, because without your service, okay, our, especially 2019, when you stepped up to help our department, and you can see the change, okay, the morale, okay, the power, the love, the unity, and that is showing the leadership of you. So here is from West Covina, okay, and for your outstanding, okay, and service for 26 years. And here is a resolution for your retirement, okay, and this is some, thank you so much for your service. You deserve to enjoy fishing and don't forget to call me, okay, and, okay. And this one, okay, is from, okay, Congresswoman Grace Namatitano, okay, and she want to present this wonderful, okay, and certificate for you. Okay, you can maybe hold it. So, so, so anyway, this is, but the last one is the most expensive one. The Bell Torres. We have, we have three name Bell, okay, and we love you and we want to forever remember you, okay, because your outstanding service to our city, but thank you so much for 26 years and make our city great. Okay, thank you so much. Chief Bell, you want to have a couple sentences?
I think I've said enough, really. I, I just can't echo enough. Thank you for all the sentiments. It means a lot to me. I'll be able to take this and cherish this. I wanted to get it memorialized. Thank you for everyone who stayed to, to, to witness this. It's truly been a pleasure for me. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm ready to step off the train. I'm going to do that and I wish the city well. Thank you.
Do we have other, okay, yeah, come up.
Hi, everyone again. My name is Carla. I'm from State Senator Susan Rubio's office. And I'm here on behalf of Senator Rubio and Abel is here on behalf of Assemblymember Rubio to present to Chief Bell a joint resolution from the California Legislature, thanking you for your public service and for protecting the community. You had a chance earlier to give your, give flowers to your family, so now we will say thank you to you and give you your flowers for your service. Thank you so much and we appreciate your leadership.
Abel from Assemblywoman Rubio's office. So I want to, we, on behalf of the Assemblywoman and the Senator, we are honored to be here to celebrate this special moment. I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Bell a couple months ago at an event that I went with one of my colleagues. And he was, I was new on the job at that time and when I first met him, he was one of the first people that I connected with. And he gave me the comfort that I was doing something, that I, that I knew what I was doing. I don't know if he remembers meeting me, but it was a couple months ago. Now, we can't thank you enough for everything that you've done for our communities and for the state, but we want to recognize you. We want to present this resolution to honor the service that you have given the community of West Covina. We wish you the best and the Assemblywoman congratulates you. And now we wish you the best with your grandbabies and with your family.
Thank you, Chief Bell. Okay, we will miss you, but hey, your duty is now over, you till 28. I'm still going to see you every day. I'm going to talk to you tomorrow about the issue, but thank you so much. Okay, let's go ahead. The, our city manager, Paulina Morales, go ahead, take over.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I have a quick city manager's report, the last one for the year. So just wanted to share, we had our Let It Snow event and it was very well attended. We had to relocate it to the city's parking lot and even then thousands and thousands of people came to attend. It was a very well, a very successful event. We had performances from Holland Crest Middle School. We had the tree lighting ceremony. We had vendor sharing and we also had the snow sledding that was very, very popular. We had a huge line. So if you weren't able to make it this year, we hope to see you at next year's event. Likewise, our Christmas parade that we partner with the Quanis Club of West Covina, we do it in partnership with them to host the annual children's Christmas parade in Santa's Village. It was held on Saturday, December 14th, and the parade highlighted local schools, organizations, and families in the community. We got 60 entries for the parade this year. So it was a huge parade and we encourage everyone to come and wave on their fellow community members following the parade there at Santa's Village, where we had food vendors, other vendors, and we had performances for different community groups as well. So once again, if you didn't attend, we hope you come next year. As we continue to move forward with the sports flex operations, in order to maintain the fields to the standard that we need to, they are going to be closed for maintenance until January 30th. And the facility will be closed between the 18th and the 5th of January. However, starting January 6th, the facilities will be open, not the fields, including the batting cages. So people will still be able to go and use the facility starting January 5th, but we do need to do maintenance on the field. So league play will commence January 31st. On December 11th, several city staff members went to a luncheon where the city was recognized by the American Public Works Association for our Cortez Park Sports Field renovation. This is where we installed the musco lighting for the Cortez Field and we were very honored to receive that award on behalf of the city. So this is one of our capital improvement projects, sorry, that through the direction from the council was completed and installed to help improve the sports fields that help leadway to the leagues that use those facilities in our community. The much anticipated Discover West Covina Winter Edition was posted today, so please check out our website to find out or get some information on the programming services and events in the community. As a testament to Chief, our Chief Bell that is going into retirement, just wanted to give some updates on some police statistics. During the last month, the City of West Covina Police Department Patrol and Detective Bureau has made some several, made several arrests for crimes that have occurred in the city. I know there's some crimes like a shooting at Tina's Tavern. Our police department, through Chief's leadership, has promptly responded to these crimes and not only that, but has made several, made significant progress for, including the shooting. They've, the suspect has been identified and while the investigation is still ongoing. And so in addition, because of the holidays, patrol and detectives conducted an undercover retail theft operation at the Eastland Center on December 11th. The operation resulted in 10 arrests, five felonies, and five misdemeanors. One incident involved the retail theft group that had stolen several, from several stores, not only in our city, but San Dimas and Glendora. And so our police departments were the one that was able to make the arrest. In addition, with the newly launched bike program, they've been doing some extra patrol along Glendora Avenue and they, which has resulted in two arrests for drug-related crimes. So our police officers are out in our community keeping us safe. And I just wanted to share some really positive news about all the hard work that they do. With the holidays, we will be suspending street sweeping and overnight parking for those areas that do have posted street sweeping and overnight parking permits. The suspension period will be from December 23rd to January 5th. Just a friendly reminder, West Covina City Hall, the holiday closure is from Monday the 23rd to Wednesday, January 1st. We will be open and ready for the new year on January 2nd. And then before I get to the last slide of upcoming events in the new year, I wanted to introduce some new staff members. I will start with Robert Ortega. He's our capital improvement project manager. And so he is in our community development department and he oversees, as I mentioned, the capital improvement projects for the city. So Robert, if I can have you come up, please.
Thank you, Paulina. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Robert Ortega and I joined the City of West Covina in June of 2024 as a CIP project manager. And prior to this, I worked for the City of Montclair for a year and a half as their project manager. With nearly 10 years of experience in the construction industry and project management, I am thrilled to be a part of this dynamic city, especially with so many exciting projects ahead and the opportunity to work with exceptional leadership. So currently, we have four projects in construction, which are the Phase One of the city, the citywide sidewalk curb and gutter, which we finally just wrapped up that project. We also have the residential street rehab, Azusa Sewer Lift Station Fence, the senior center roof and HVAC replacement, which should be done at the end of this month. And also we have 12 projects in the pipeline, which are expected to start in early 2025. That includes Cortez Park pathway lighting, Friendship Park restroom and park design, Palm View Park roof replacement, BKK Detention Center, I mean, sorry, BKK Detention Basin, Fire Station Two and Floor, Two and Four Refloring, Design for City Hall ADA improvements, multi-park LED signs, Fire Station One. We have our kickoff meeting for design tomorrow, so I'm excited for that one. Traffic signal upgrades, which is the, the H ship cycle 10 for the 10, 10 intersections. We also have, we're starting the Phase Two of the sidewalk curb and gutter throughout our city. Also the citywide pedestrian and vehicle upgrades. And lastly, the street sweeping signage project. And for those 12 projects, we have around $6,183,338 ready to be spent. A little about me, and I'm excited to be part of this amazing city with amazing leadership.
Yep. Thank you so much, Robert. Welcome, boy, okay, and this job is extremely needed. The city need to supervise all the project. We have a lot of project going on and that is needed. I want to give this time to all the city council and Mayor Poten, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say welcome and we actually are super excited to see all these projects going through and actually making it happen. I just want to make sure that you're aware, that to just kindly read the fine prints on all the contracts, sometimes projects are done and it looks completed, pay them, we're done, and then a few months later, we get complaints. It's not really to the level that where it should be. So just make sure that it's taken care of, otherwise you hear it from us, well, we hear it from the community and it just trickles up. So I just want to say thank you. We look forward to your experience, your hard work, and we actually just look forward to seeing those projects completed on time. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. And any other city council, yeah, and Council, Councilman Aldi Kento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert, it's really great to have you aboard. Formally welcome and it was nice hanging out with you during the awards ceremony as well. So as these projects move forward, will you be issuing communications that show the progress? The residents will know what is happening with each of these 12 projects as they, as they are completed?
Yes, I, yes. Right now, we have, through that, we do, we post on social media, we do on the website. We have one for the ADA survey, where we do community outreach that way. Also, I report back to management to let you guys know what's going on, but any residents, they can contact me via email, phone call. I've done it multiple times now, so that's one way.
If I could add too, we're also working on a project and once we have a little, we have it a little bit more finalized, we'll be sharing that, but it'll be a way to communicate the ongoing capital improvement projects throughout the city. And so residents would be able to go onto the website to see what projects are completed, when, what the timeframe is, and what those projects entail.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, Councilman Kento. And let's go to the councilmember Gutierrez.
Yeah, I think just like Councilman Letty Lopez Vialdo said, make sure you look at the fine print. Well, before I get there, congratulations on your new position. Well, before I get there, congratulations on your new position. And just like Councilman Letty Lopez Vialdo stated, make sure you're looking at the fine print, making sure that you look at some of the conditions of approval on some of those bigger projects that are coming, our housing projects, and make sure that there's accountability. And I think that more and more projects are coming to our community, and our community is going to be proud. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member. Let's go ahead, Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you and welcome. And I'm looking forward to seeing all the improvements that we'll be looking at or looking, watching our city and how they improve. Really looking forward to. And also, yes, I would like accountability. I'd like to see the improvements and see what we've completed and what hasn't been completed like this. We're on top of stuff, because I know that our constituents are constantly asking questions about things like that. So thank you.
Yep, thank you, and Mayor Poten, Letty Lopez Vialdo.
Again, like I said, we are excited. So we are excited. But again, I know that they mentioned like the fine print, but also just enforce that they do the work and supervise the projects before everything is sealed. So supervise everything along the way. More importantly, take pictures before, during, and after, and please share that with the community. We love seeing results. And, you know, I know when you say sewer, nobody really sees that, but it is important. But yeah, yeah, just take pictures and share. Thank you.
Thank you, council. I think you can see all the five city council are excited for you on board, because it been, this is needed, okay? We've been, again, asking for city manager for a couple of years that due to, we have a lot of project, like kind of lack of the screw and this and that, and they kind of drop in the sky, and then we have a lot of issue. And hopefully, this is in-house. You work for the city of West Covina, our staff, so you can supervise all the project, okay? And all the project, okay, make sure they're doing the right thing, okay? And the contractor and this and that. And another thing, transparency. We need all this project on our website, and maybe you can once or twice give us a report about what's going on and this and that, so we and the resident can know each of improvement, what's happened, how far away, when it can be completed, okay? I think people want to know the information, so they don't have to come to city council, ask us what's going on, then we have to ask you. So if we can have a system in our website checking each of the, okay, capital improvement and all this project, and the people can see what's going on, then I think that's what people want. So welcome, okay? And do a great job, and we're proud of you to join us, and welcome again and again, and hopefully you do a great job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm committed to work hard.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, appreciate.
Thank you, Robert. Next, I'd like to introduce, or maybe reintroduce, some of you already know him. He's been with the city for quite some time, Harado Rojas. He's the Acting Community Development Housing Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and everyone in attendance. I want to take this opportunity to thank council and management for this opportunity. I'm truly honored to step in into the role dearly. Taking on the responsibility is not something I take lightly. We have an incredible team, and together, I believe we can achieve great things. Excuse me, economic development is about people. It's about creating opportunities for individuals to thrive, for businesses to grow, and for our community to prosper. With that being said, economic development is thrilled to announce several exciting upcoming projects. Just wanted to update the council. Our Chamber of Commerce, we are actively expanding our chamber by recruiting new businesses. Our goal is to foster its growth and have it as a resource for our local business community. City Yard, progress on the City Yard is moving forward. So just to our community, stay tuned for our updates that are upcoming. Plaza West Covina, there's great growth opportunity at Plaza West Covina. As we all know, we are excited to announce that coming up, the grand opening of Urban Cafe on January 10th. So we hope to see residents there. So we're excited about that. But on top of that, we are dedicated to building on this momentum and attracting new, exciting businesses to not only the plaza, but to the community as a whole. As far as our dealerships, we're excited to, with some updates on that as well. We're excited to announce the upcoming opening of Envision Toyota West Covina at its new location along Citrus Avenue. Additionally, with their movement, we look forward to the arrival of the new Envision Mercedes-Benz, which will be taking the place of the current Toyota West Covina coming up shortly. Lastly, I just want to take this opportunity to take, to thank you for this incredible opportunity, and I'm excited to get started.
Thank you so much, Harado. Any city council have a question, comment? Mayor Poten, go ahead.
I just want to say welcome and congratulations. I know I've worked with you in the past, and I'm glad that you know the history of West Covina, and you're around there. And I do appreciate all the updates you provided this evening, and we do look forward to more economic development and, you know, success with the city. So congratulations and thank you.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited. So do I give you the list? Or who do I give the list of the restaurants that I want?
Give it to me.
To come in.
Welcome.
We need a Cracker Barrel here. We need a Tommy's Burger here. Let's see, what else can we pick? No, we need several, what is it?
Trader Joe's.
Trader Joe's, absolutely. Come back, Trader Joe's, yes. So I'm hoping that, you know, you can work on things like that, and I appreciate that. And congratulations, and welcome again.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yeah, congratulations on your new position. I know my council colleagues speak very highly of you. I know our city manager, Paulina Morales, speaks very highly of you, and she's entrusted you in this new role. And this council is proud to support our city manager and her decision. And I look forward to the potential you have in bringing so much more to this community. So thank you, and congratulations.
Councilman Aldi Kento.
Thank you, G. Congratulations, really excited. I wanted to ask, what metrics are you putting together in terms of the growth rate that you would like, most ideally for the chamber to have? So I know that you're, you're going to be promoting the growth, but what will be the metrics that you use to determine your progress in being successful with that? That's the first question.
That's something I will be looking into. I haven't gotten to that yet, but that's something I will be reporting to council.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the second thing is, I just wanted to bring your attention. It'll be something I'll bring up later. But the City of Eastvale actually has done a, an innovative loan program to support businesses. So maybe if you could, if you could also look, what is your plan for looking at innovative approaches that other cities are doing, so we could replicate those, so that we don't have to prevent from, or we don't have to end up reinventing the proverbial wheel with regard to the approaches that worked in other cities?
I welcome any suggestions from council, by all means. All yours. Again, that's, that's information that I will be looking into, but absolutely, I will be reporting that type of information that you're, you're seeking to you.
Thank you. Congratulations, G.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yeah, just to echo some of what Councilmember Kanto said, I think it's very important to work with organizations like the Small Business Administration and work with them to see how we can market some of their programs to this community. It's government-funded loans due to federal government, a federal agency, the Small Business Administration, and work very closely where our new Congressman Gil Soneros, who I know in my phone conversation with him, he's, he's dedicated to serving this community. And yeah, work very closely with his office to get in contact with the SBA. So, yeah.
Like I said, I welcome any suggestions, any contacts, by all means. That's, that's all I can do.
Thank you, council member. I just want to clarify one thing. Which one you prefer, the Harado or G? Okay, I just.
My name is Harado Rojas. For those that can pronounce it, by all means, I welcome it. For those who can't.
Harado is okay?
Harado is fine. If you can't pronounce it, by all means, you could call me G.
G is okay too? Because I know you for a long time, so I don't know.
Absolutely, if you call me G.
No, I think, I can feel bad, call you just an English letter, hey, G, okay? I think it's kind of disrespectful. I say.
Honestly, everyone knows me by G.
But, but one thing is this, but thank you for clarifying, so I can call you Harado if you don't mind. That's your name, right?
Mayor, you can call me G.
G is okay? Okay, 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 G, okay. One thing is this, congratulations and welcome. And it's, this is overdue for you. I can see your potential for the city, and you always dare, okay? And do the grand opening, this and that. I saw you for nine years already, okay? So it's about time for you to take this department, because the Economic Development Department is very, very important for our future. And the issue is to bring the revenue and job to the city. And West Covina has, is a business city. We have so many shopping malls, and we have so many businesses. We have about 3,000, 4,000 businesses, okay? And we need them to unite from you to city to tell them that we are going to here to help you to survive and help you to develop and, and doing even better. At the same time, we need to recruit, okay, for outside business, and that will be all on your shoulder, okay? This is the job. But this is how, okay, a city can survive for future, the one-year plan, three-years plan, five-year plan, how many the business, how many development we can bring into the city. And that is a city resource and revenue and jobs. And we need to provide jobs and jobs and jobs for our residents. By the same time, we need business to provide sales tax, et cetera, et cetera, for our future. We need development for us to continue to have all this development come to our city, because that is how the city can survive, to pay for our program, okay? And now, rather than, okay, raise taxes. I think our revenue is coming from the business and sales tax and their fee and this and that. So anyway, welcome, and if you need any help and anything from the city council, please. We are excited and very, very proud for you to accept this position. It's a very challenging position. It's, it's control our city future. So I want to wish you all the best, and anything can help you, okay? Especially West Covina Chamber, and to unite the business together and give them information to help them to survive, provide service. I think this is the most important thing currently, your job, and hopefully bring more business to us. So thank you so much to step up, and welcome, and we're proud of you.
Thank you for that.
Mr. G.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other council? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate, okay? Yeah, go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, Harado. It's next year, but it's next month, so just wanted to give a couple of updates. The next community event that we're going to be having is Martin Luther King's event that we partner, do a partnership. It is looking for Monday, January 20th. More details will follow, information will be on the website. Also, the Cortez Park Community and Senior Center Open House will be held January 24th, that's a Friday from 12 to noon at Cortez Park and Community Center. As Robert was mentioning, I believe, the new roof should be completed by then. So not that a lot of people will be able to see that from the open house, but it'll be featuring a new roof. And then just to save the date, for March 29th to the 30th, for the Spring Festival. So just, those are the upcoming events. Other than that, just wishing everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year.
Okay, thank you, managers, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just a quick, just to double check. January 20th, that's inauguration day, right? So we'd be having the event the same day as inauguration day? For Martin Luther King, you said January 20th?
That's the date that we have, yes.
Okay, so we got a date set, okay? Now, we, have you, you done with your report, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we move to the next item, that will be oral communication. Okay, we will now move to oral communication. If anyone want to like to address to the council, please fill out the orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start line up in the center now. Okay, timer will start with, okay, five minutes? Okay, and our first speaker, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We have John Schumaker, followed by Lola Finley, followed by Albert Ochoa.
Is John here?
I'll go ahead and call Lola Finley, followed by Albert Ochoa, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Hi, good evening, councilmember, staff, residents. I just here on behalf of Chief Bell. I just wanted to thank him. I'm going to get my phone here. I just wanted to thank him for all that he has done for the city. Richard Bell has been my area from the beginning, before he was a chief. He serviced our area, and he was just amazing. He came to our doors, he knocked, he asked us if there was anything we needed. He wanted to know what was going on in our community, and we were just really thankful to have him as our area lieutenant. Chief Bell attended our city council, our neighborhood watch meetings when they weren't doing that at the time. It was an unprecedented thing for police to come to our meetings, to a meeting for the neighborhood. And he was just ahead of the times before everyone else was doing this. He was patient, he listened to the residents, he was concerned. The residents felt, heard, and felt that, that our issues were going to be addressed. He became a part of our community. He was always steadfast in his leadership in the community and as the chief of police. I haven't really followed what's going on in the city, but I have been following Chief Bell, because he's just done an amazing job. He has gotten us through COVID. He's brought us to an election that brought chaos to every city in our nation under the new laws that were passed. He was able to unite not only the city, but his staff, the officers, so they can do their job. Let me see. The, one of the things that really stuck out was when we were named the safest city. Wasn't surprised for me, because I've known Chief Bell for so long. I just was hoping that he would continue to get that recognition. And again, I, I don't know if he did at the time when it was written up, but I wanted to, everyone to know that, under his leadership, that we were nominated, mentioned as one of the safest cities in the nation. And 100,000 plus is a lot of people to be in charge of.
Big deal.
Yeah, to keep us safe. So it's, it's no small feat. He has led his department under several new city managers and under some very challenging times. I don't know if you guys have the opportunity to read the article that was in the Pasadena paper about him, but just reading that just confirms just what an amazing man he is and how blessed we are as a community. And I'm, I, I didn't know that he had hired so many new police, so that gives me a comfort, knowing that we have him that has trained him and, and just feel comforted that the city will continue to be. I think it, his leadership will be there, and he, that he planted a lot of seeds that will hopefully keep us going in the right direction. I hope that he continues to be involved in our city while he's in retirement. I, I hope that, that you guys reach out when you guys have questions, because during his six years that he was here, there was a lot of changes. And I, I think we have a lot to learn from him, and I hope that you guys continue to reach out and utilize his techniques and his mind. And I just want to again thank Chief Bell for his service to our city and to the residents, and want to wish him continued success. And that, we'll be praying for him, and that he just continues to be, as, as Ole Kanto says, an awesome force for the good. So thank you, Chief Bell, and, and thank you guys for choosing. I know it was a different council at the time, but thank you for choosing him and having, letting him be our chief of police for the City of West Covina. We were blessed to have him.
Thank you, Lola. Okay, next, please.
Albert Ochoa, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
City Mayor, City Council, manager and staff, Albert Ochoa. I'm here to address the issue of large trucks and trailers in West Covina District 3 to our residents. Harado Diaz, thank you for your prompt response Rosario Diaz, thank you for your prompt response to help restore our resident's street back to safe driving so we can prevent large trucks and trailers to continue, that continue to violate the no truck posted signs from both directions on East Garvey Avenue South between Lark Allen Avenue and Assusa Avenue. West Covina Police Department, thank you for your officers patrolling our resident's street. I admit with the West Covina Traffic Commission on Tuesday, December 10, 2024, they completed our traffic review of our request for our truck signage review and have plans for improving to reroute the trucks and we thank you. My concern is we have one posted truck route sign, truck route sign on South Vincent Avenue and Lakes Drive traveling eastbound. The other posted sign, truck route sign is on South Vincent Avenue and South Lindora Avenue traveling northbound. Right now, for those drivers that use this posted truck route, it doesn't have any signage indicating which way to continue travel. Once they have entered on the Lakes Drive and South Lindora Avenue, some drivers end up by my residence. If they don't have a delivery here, they should not be driving through this Colony Lakes area with large trucks and trailers that are approximately 50 to 60 feet long and can weigh up to 79,000 pounds. Truck Route is a designated road or set of streets that are trucks used to enter and exit a city or area and are designed to accommodate large trucks and carefully plan to reduce the risk of accidents and damage considering factors like a sharp turn. What we're experiencing is things drivers will use this truck route to end up on Assusa Avenue Truck Route. The problem is that they're not familiar with these streets, East Garvey Avenue South and Cherrywood Street. This is a sharp corner turn that was not constructed for large trucks and trailers to travel. So they end up causing damage to the streetlight posts and the street improvements. I asked traffic committee if we can have these posted trucks route signs replaced and posted no trucks with their weight limit to eliminate the trucks that do not have a delivery in this area. From what I understood, this was a municipal code that needed to be addressed with city council and city managers for review. Respectfully, I'm asking to please review this area that is in the best interest for the residents to make sure that we have the proper signage needed to address the safety issues included. Our pictures, truck route map, where I believe it's outdated and maybe need to be revised to meet our current events that we have been, that have been taking place. Deliveries will not be disrupted. All we're asking is to post with their weight limit so that only small bobtail trucks drive in without causing damage in this area. So again, there's only one area, the two areas I'm looking at. South Vincent turned into Lakes Drive, the Colony Lakes area, the nice luxury apartments. We don't need trucks to be that truck route right there. That was probably posted two decades ago. And the other one is Vincent and Lindora traveling northbound. I have a map that I put it on there and I showed you where I would like to put a truck weight posted. This way, they don't end up in my area. Because once they're in that area, they end up causing damage. Two street light posts, picture submitted. And our delineers had, they improved in 2023, our street, they improved for the safety that we were having. Turned out good, but now they damaged them, they're not there no more. So I appreciate everything that we're going forward on there, but I think before we continue to address the issue that we got to tackle to make sure nobody goes in there. Again, right now, they're already going to improve that area, but I think it could be more improved that we put weight limits. Weight limits mean a lot. And I'll say that, I have a commercial license, okay? If I see a truck route, I'm able to go in there, even if I have no delivery in there, okay? We don't want just drivers going in there with 18-wheelers, five axles, driving in that area and some of them don't violate the no truck and then they continue. But if we put no truck, post the weight limit, that should address that issue right there. At least it would help. But what we're experiencing, it's getting more and more. I don't want bringing it up, bringing it up, but it's, somebody's gonna get hurt. Again, if you guys see that picture, that is a street light post. It landed on the property of 101. Could have landed on the house, it landed on their fence. The other one, that was on 2023, on 2024, that one landed on the street. It could have been a person walking, a vehicle passing by, landing on that vehicle. So I'm just trying to be proactive. I see the things that are out there, it worries me. So I'm here to address that. So I ask you to review that, please. Thank you.
And give Mr. Ochoa, okay?
Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And if you don't believe in Christmas, well, too bad. So I just wanted to say a couple of things. I'll make this short. I want to thank Chief Bell for all the years of service. I've done a few programs with the chief. He's a very kind and gentle person. Actually, he's a gentle giant. And it was a privilege to work with him. And I want to say thank you. As we go into the new year, we're going to have new leadership, both in police and fire. And I would encourage everybody in the community to get behind the city and support both police and fire. I would give you a little detail personally with Chief Bell. I used to play in Pasadena, I used to play ball up there for about 25, 30 years. And I played with all the guys he went to high school with. And Chief Bell was a phenomenal athlete. He was, I know he was all CI, CI Player of the Year, I think. And he went to Nebraska. I don't know how USC never picked him up. But they all told me, and I'm talking about, are you listening, chief? Orlando Troy, Arnold Weiss, they all tell me to tell you, hi Ricky. Because that was, that was his name when he was growing up. And one more thing. You know, I've been coming to these council meetings for, geez, probably since the 80s. I'm tired of looking at that scratch. I can fix that. Can I volunteer my time to come fix that? There's a scratch on the wood. That's what I do. I'd love to fix it. Thank you.
We have a city manager to contact you.
Absolutely.
Next speaker, next speaker, please. Thank you, Glenn. Glad you hire.
Actually, just touched on, gentlemen, I was at the same traffic meeting with regards to truck routes where it was brought up that the last time that the truck routes were generated, I think it was 2001. And that specific area, he's talking about the Colony, I don't think existed at that time. I think the Wicks Furniture was there. The whole area, the dynamic of that area has changed dramatically. I think there's a 51-unit apartment that's going to be, being built right behind the car wash. So I think it's time to relook at that truck route. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Any other speaker?
No further speaker, cards, mayor.
Okay, good, okay. I know, the city manager raised her hand, she wants to speak.
Five minutes.
The city manager, she can speak as long as she want, okay? Two minutes, okay, go ahead.
No, just wanted to thank those speakers that came and had nice words to say to our outgoing chief. We are going to miss him very much. I've had the pleasure of working with him for a long time now. And then more recently in his role as chief and in my current role. It really has been a pleasure to learn from him, from, you know, all the experience that he has. So we will miss him, but thank you guys for coming and having those positive comments about him. And then to Mr. Ochoa, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns with us. We will be taking a comprehensive look at the truck routes within our community. It's something that, you know, we should be taking a look and making sure that our streets are safe and that, you know, the weight limits are on the appropriate streets that they should be. So thank you for coming during the holiday season to share your concerns with us. And we will keep you posted. I believe the traffic committee has your information. And then, other than that, I hope you guys have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. That concludes my.
Thank you, city manager. But I agree with Mr. Ochoa regarding the concern. I think he really spent a lot of time and put this together with all the effort. I think this is, we need to take this seriously and go to the, our traffic committee and please don't delay and to let them look into it. I think two things. One thing is about, okay, and to make the signage and make sure, okay? I agree that there was wicked furniture, you would big truck going through, but now it's an apartment and so you shouldn't have a truck going through. So we need to post a sign, okay? Another thing is the enforcement, okay? We need to have our police traffic officer to make sure. They need to ticket all those, okay, 16-wheeler going to a residential neighborhood. If they get a ticket, they know they cannot go there because they will get cut. So I think there's a two issue, is a posted sign. And second thing is enforcement or traffic enforcement and to make sure those big truck don't, okay, trembling into our city. I saw a lot of truck into our city, even on my street residential, you have a big truck going through too. So meaning, okay, we need a police, okay? We need to tell Chief Bell, she not retiring yet. Let's get this traffic thing go through. But anyway, other city council have anything? Yes, okay, councilwoman, yes?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, Mr. Ochoa and his wife have been kind enough to invite me to their house along with their neighbors. And we have been discussing this for four years at least. And it's something that's ongoing and we have to do something about it. It just doesn't stop. I know that we need to put some signs on Lark Allen everywhere before they actually make the turn. Because once these big rigs make that turn going eastbound from Lark Allen, that's it. What are they going to do? Go in reverse, there's no way. So they're committed and they have to just move forward. And so when they do that, then they go ahead and destroy the rest of the street. And it's very dangerous. I mean, the pictures that Mr. Troy has sent us are really, really bad. They've damaged so many cars, so many fences, and we're talking cinder block fences. So this is something that's really important and I just want to ask the staff, can we please, please work on this? Because it's been going on way too long, way too long. So that's all.
Okay, thank you, councilwoman, okay? Next, councilmember Gutierrez?
Yeah, just to echo what councilwoman Rosario Diaz just stated. Did we ever get reimbursement from these accidents, from these big rig trucks? They're damaged our city property? Alina, do you know that?
There is a process to get reimbursement when there's accidents on city property. I can't speak to those specific incidences, but I can follow up.
We should follow, yeah, because if they damage our property, then they're going to have to pay for it. But, but just like, and just like councilwoman Diaz said, yeah. If four years, that's not acceptable and our urge TransTech, our contractor, TransTech Engineering to do a better job on that and to get this done before it's too late. So thank you.
Okay, councilman Kenton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Something that would be important too would be the law enforcement component of making sure that there's someone there who could ticket those who violate these rules. Because, yeah, that, when word gets out that we're going to find them a lot, then that should hopefully be a deterrent as well. So that should be added into whatever plan we do to address these issues as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, council. And Mr. Ochoa, we look and see we take it seriously and we already put the pressure on the city manager. And hopefully they will go to the, okay, the traffic committee, get anything done. And I saw that picture all the places and that is on call for to our city. And I think we need to make sure the post, the sign posted. At the same time, enforcement to make sure, okay? And so we need to hire more traffic officer. So anyway, I thank you so much for coming and I appreciate you spend all the time. Okay, and then we done with oral communication, then move to consent calendar. And any city council want to approve any consent calendar?
I'll just abstain from item number one, since I wasn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, you want to abstain. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, one to four, beside councilmember Gutierrez abstain the number one?
I'll move the motion.
Okay, who, okay, I have a first and second. Roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. I have a motion by councilwoman Diaz, a second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viatto to approve consent calendar items one through four with councilmember Gutierrez abstaining on item number one. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viatto?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye.
Items pass 5-0, mayor with the abstention on item one.
Thank you, citizen, okay, city clerk. And now we move to, okay, the council requests and, and do we have any AB 1234 conference and the meeting report? None? Okay, okay, now I'm going to the city council request. And I know, Brian, you have quite a lot.
I'll go last.
Yeah, you go the last. And beside that, any other council member, okay? And councilwoman, councilwoman want to have, okay? How many you have? One, okay, go ahead. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, mayor. So I just want to thank you again for the tree lighting and snow. It was fantastic, it's beautiful. I understand that the tree is its last year. I know we've used it for so many years. But I just wanted to request that if we can get a bigger Christmas tree, preferably maybe the biggest one in the San Gabriel Valley area to match the spirit of all those that are, that enjoys Christmas, such as our retired fire. If we can't purchase it, then possibly rent it and maybe highlight it in another area where there's more people to see. But I'd like to request a purchase or rental of the biggest Christmas tree as we can get.
Okay, I second that, I agree. Anybody against this? None? Okay, we need a bigger tree, okay, for next year.
Yeah.
And she will be the mayor that time, no one, she want a bigger tree.
Yeah.
What did you request earlier? Okay, well, thank you so much, okay? And this approved, okay, to go to city to look into the bigger tree for next year when our mayor pro tem become the mayor. Okay, and the next one will be, I will go to our councilman Olejantel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one. I'm wondering if the city manager can give us the latest updates on Amar and Westport? We've been waiting and we're really anxious to get that done. I understand that everything is in process, but it is just a major priority for us. And it would be horrible if anything happened to anyone in the meantime. So we just, we just really need to give that top priority. And I really would like for, I don't know what the date, the council feels we should do it, but we need, we need an update, a substantive update, besides we're working on it or whatever. We need something done with major progress on this to get that done because it's important.
Okay, and I think based on what you say and what happened, okay? I think first thing, we're waiting for the report. And second thing, we want the traffic engineer to look into this corner. So I think this is, Mother May, I look the report back to us regarding what we're going to do and if this thing can be done, okay? And so we want to like be done ASAP. But we want to see what the report regarding how to keep the corner safe. So anyway, anybody against that?
No, real quick, can we do it by the first meeting of February?
Can we depend on, can we do the first meeting of February?
By, yes.
Okay, so.
If I, sorry, if I could clarify, you want an update on the status of that?
Yeah, substantive update, yeah.
The report regarding what, okay, traffic engineer, okay, the finding regarding how it happened, okay, why it happened and how can we avoid anything happen again? Make sense? Is that what?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, councilwoman Diaz.
Don't you want to just know when we're going to have the left turn dedicated light? Olejano?
Yes, that's ultimately what we want.
Yeah.
We could provide an update on the, towards that.
What I think.
Thank you for the clarification.
Let the traffic engineer, okay, they need to bring this report to us regarding, because they go into the complex, is the left turn, is feasible to make sure that can be done and to save lives. So we want to make sure that the report come to us. And if yes, then of course we need to do ASAP. So, okay, so anyway, okay, why? You have any other? Same subject, different subject?
No, it's different subject.
Different subject? So clarify, basically, okay, councilman Kenton requests, okay, the report back to February, the first meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and TransTech, the city, okay, traffic engineer need to bring this, the finding, okay, how can improve the intersection to avoid any future, any accident? Am I right? Okay, thank you. Okay, then move on to the next one. You have another one?
Just to follow up, thank you, mayor. So I know I put in a request on September 17 for Mother May, for the resolution urging government use in for the, when the insurance commission to declare state of, regarding the whole insurance. I don't know where we're at with that because home, auto, it's just an increase. I know residents has been complaining about it, it's affecting everybody. And so I haven't seen that come back. So I would like to see that on our next meeting for February because it's been already a few months.
Okay, and Mayor Protem, you want to come back with a resolution or want to come back with what?
Well, yeah, resolution. That was the request that I originally requested and, you know, disinformation.
So I know I receive a lot of email, send email address sent to us. I think we all receive tons of.
Over 100 emails we receive.
It's like automotive.
Different, and it has different addresses. And there are some that is within our city that they place their home address. So we do have some West Covina residents are on that. But there are tons from like all over San Gabriel Valley.
Got it. I think the problem is, okay, the resolution, okay? I don't know how we can achieve anything. We can do a resolution, but the point is currently insurance go out like crazy, okay? And nothing, nobody can do anything. And the state continue to tell us this is a crisis and the people don't have accident on their car, they go to almost 50, 60% increase. And the homeowner insurance, a lot of people cannot even get insurance. So this is a state emergency, their crisis, but we are suffering right now. And I don't know our resolution can do any good to force them to do anything. At a CAC meeting, they have insurance company, Luna's, okay? And the liaison come to talk to us, okay? And my, our suggestion, my suggestion is open it up, okay? If we say all the, okay, insurance company come to us so we can have more of an open market, not too much of regulation. Because right now they're regulated. But anyway, so, okay, our mayor pro tem request, you want the resolution or what?
Yeah, a resolution. And if there's other options, as you mentioned, I'd like to see that taken into effect as well.
Yeah, maybe open up the market, the insurance come, insurance department, okay? Have them to understand, okay, current crisis, they cannot, don't see it, okay? But I think this is an entire nation issue, not only the California, but California has become the.
Well, no, it's actually because. Well, no, it's actually, because it's actually California. There's four states only where the insurance says, these like California, New York, these are the states that we're no longer providing insurance for because it's a high risk. So it's not the whole US, it's.
Correct, okay.
Well, primarily I'm focusing on California because we live here, so, yes.
Just right now, we have a Franklin fire going on right now and a lot of houses can get burned down. So we got issue of potential higher fire hazard area. So, and they blend on, the people don't even in the fire hazard still have to pay the most. Okay, okay, and the council member Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yeah, just to go on, Councilwoman, Leti Lopez, Leti Lopez Viados comment about the insurance issue. I will say that that would be important, that we could send that once it is done or we send that to the chair, the, I can't even talk now, the chair of the Insurance Commission for the State Senate and Assembly. Those two chairs are responsible in creating the legislation needed and they sit on oversight, so.
If nobody against this, and we should send out the resolution request our insurance commission, okay, our Department of Insurance to make sure, okay, they have a solution, how to help the resident, okay, and go through this crisis. Because even the fail plan of California, it become very expensive, almost like no coverage, okay? And for a lot of people, maybe just abandon the insurance. It's not healthy for our economy. So anything against this or otherwise, we all agree to send out a resolution and request and to our state insurance commission, okay, and committed to do something. Yeah, go ahead, okay, and Councilman Kenton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reemphasize, since this was already something we agreed to before, to make, to have this be on the first meeting of January. I mean, it's just that we should do it as quickly as possible.
Let's do this ASAP, since it's not difficult to give a resolution for five city council to sign, okay? And we still around, so we can get this thing done and send it to the state and into the right department and request. And I think our council member Gutierrez has a good connection with state. Okay, maybe you can pull some string, okay, solve our crisis. Okay, and we are done with our one or two, Mother May I? Now we go to the long night to happy duty, okay? And wow, drum roll, please. How many, Mother May I, you have for tonight?
Dun, 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 let's see, one, two, we gotta make count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It's like how many speaker we have. So we got limited to three minutes, three minutes.
Fifteen. I'll get them back fast.
Okay, okay, one by one, we have. We only need three.
No, be fast.
Okay, yeah, yeah, let's do this, okay, we, we have.
We have three, you have the majority, so we both can.
Point order. It's my first point order. Okay, and let's, let's go to the first Mother May I, since our newly elect, very hyper, okay, and council member, they have fifteen, Mother May I, let's go to the first one.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor Wu and, and the council. Yes, I stay committed on representing the residents of District One and the whole city and fulfilling my goals and promises I made to our residents. And so item number one, a council request is to direct the city, is to direct staff regarding capital improvement project number C is at Charlie two, four, zero, zero, one, the Down North Day Park Improvement and Dog Park. Whereas 1.3 million has been allocated in the 2024, 2025 budget. I direct staff to initiate request for proposals with a focus on a Down North Day Dog Project, Dog, sorry, the Down North Day Dog Park Project and restroom renovations by no later than early February and a selection and presented to the council at the April fifteenth, 2025 council meeting.
Okay, so let me clarify your first, Mother May I. Okay, so you're talking about the budget and talking about the Dog Park?
So.
And the Down North Day Park?
There's, there's money allocated already that's not been used specifically for the Down North Day Improvement Project. And I'm wanting to execute two of those contracts in a priority way for.
City manager, can you clarify his, Mother May I? Okay, because sound like we have some approved budget to improve the park and the Dog Park. And I think he requests it give you the, okay, the deadline when that thing should be, okay? And I don't know that is feasible based on, maybe you can tell us that's doable or not?
Yeah, so there was a project, but, or the project was budgeted for improvements at Down North Day Park. I think the 1.3 million included various improvements. I think your Mother May I is prioritizing two of those improvements that were listed. I believe some of that money may have been spent on the playground resurfacing. So the balance of that can go towards the prioritize projects that Councilmember Gutierrez is recommending in his Mother May I.
Yes.
So, so, so if we originated 1.3 million dollars, okay, on the budget and you already relocate to some, to improve some of the playground? So in that way, how much money left, then can do the improvement for the rest of the, okay, thing? I don't want to, this is just a mother may I, okay, enough of discussion, okay? I don't want, otherwise fifteen, we'll go to the midnight, okay? So, so, so let's do this.
So I ran, I ran, just so you know, Mayor, I ran this all by city staff before I made all this up.
Okay, is that doable? If it doable, if nobody against, so we will go.
If there is an issue that comes up, I will notify the council if we're not able to make those dates. There are some things that happen when we bid out a project, it can be out of our control. But we will do our best to meet those timeframes, which as Councilmember Gutierrez is, we did.
Councilman Kenton?
As a friendly amendment to the request, could they add the, would Councilman Gutierrez be willing to add the coyote rollers to protect pets who are in the Dog Park? The coyote rollers at the top of the fences, because small dogs are there and they're coyotes. And just, this is a small amendment to the Mother May I.
I think once Paulina comes back with the bid, we could talk to the contractor at that.
Okay, let's do this, okay, and let's send to the, just get this Mother May I out of the door. This is one of fifteen, so first one, we already hit obstacle. Okay, so, okay, anybody against? Nobody? Okay, approve and please city look into it and bring it back and in the tiny matter. Okay, next one, please.
Okay, and just so the council know, I'm gonna be saying a lot of dates, but just know that I did run it by Paulina and that's how we came up with the dates, so don't get scared. Okay, the next one, number two, to direct the city manager to work with the Deputy Director of Public Works to present a presentation to the city council on expanding the city of West Covina's Maintenance Department into a food service maintenance department. With the current manpower, present facts showing cost saving by authorizing the maintenance to expand their duties. To report, the report should also include what defines a food service by explaining what they can do but are currently not doing due to outsourcing of outside contracts.
Okay, thank you. The number two, Mother May I, is the city to look into the comparison with our contract. Okay, contract out and or in-house with our staff. And we have a report to see which one is feasible, okay? Can we do the in-house by our own staff or the contract will be more feasible? And the performance, which one is better? Am I right? Okay, Brian? Brian, am I right?
Oops. Messed up. I think, is it better? Okay. What was I gonna say? I think it was to do a report, it's a general report. So Paulina will work with Rob Wu to figure out what they're actually capable of doing and then coming back to us and telling us what they're able to do.
We want to know the budget, okay, and how much and compare we pay for the, currently we have a, okay, two contractor, one is a merchant doing the majority of park, everything. Again, I don't want to discuss into detail, but I want to clarify your Mother May I. So otherwise, we, we, we ask them to do something, it's not what we think about. And second thing is we have a bright view to doing the, 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 the media and the role. And I think bright view is the issue, okay? So anyway, to city to look into the comparison of the in-house and to take over the possible bright view contractor of their service, okay? And Leti Lopez, you have something to say? No? Okay, you want to add on?
No, I think it's a little different, not to take over the contract. It's, it's to, I think, I spoke with city staff, so it's to work, for example, let's just say, Paulina will call, Wu will meet, they're gonna create a book like this, this tells us, hey, by the way, we could, we could, we could go do the cement outside, we're capable of doing that, but we're not allowed to right now. So it's just understanding what they're capable of doing.
Okay.
And telling us because of they're able to do that stuff, how much will we be saving based upon prior contracts? Is it?
It's like clear to you, city manager? You got it now, okay, and all, any objection for that? No, then we move on number three, please.
Okay. Number three, to expand the scope of the staff report regarding engineering services that the council requested, request for proposals to go out and the city to report. I would like to request for the report to be expanded so the city staff can present options for in-house engineering services. The report should be fairly demonstrating the pros and cons and the potential for cost savings to the taxpayers of West Covina.
Okay, anybody against this? Nope, okay, move on, number five? Number four, number? Number four, go ahead.
Yeah, number four. That I, that I have, I have had the privilege of personally communicating with the contractor assigned to the Vincent Avenue and Brenton Avenue Intersection Project. Over a phone call, I asked, I asked the contractor, how much longer would the project be delayed for? The response I got was four to six months, four to six more months before anything will get installed. I would like to direct the city manager to work with the Deputy Director of Public Works to intramally repaint term, to intram, this is bless you. To intramally repaint turn markings and redo crosswalk markings to a ladder design to ensure enhanced safety intramally.
Okay, anybody against that? Nope, okay, number five, please.
Number five, sorry, guys. That the city manager work with the Deputy Director of Public Works to determine if the city of West Covina's Maintenance Department can conduct beautification work on the middle islands on Sunset Avenue and also the ones on Vincent Avenue. My understanding is that the maintenance can do the project and if so, tell the council the cost savings of using our own maintenance department instead of a contractor based on similar projects on the Sousa Avenue corridor. Please report back to the council by February eighteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, anybody against this? If not, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that when they do work on those medians, they really need to consider what kind of plants they're gonna put there. Because you gotta make sure that they're drought resistant, low maintenance, because we don't want to run into the problem that we had with the Sousa.
Yeah, and just, and just to briefly say, I did, we did go that, I did go over that with the city manager and when that report comes back, it's supposed to talk about design and all that stuff, yeah.
I think city manager Paulina, you should kiss your vacation goodbye. You have a lot of work. Okay, next one, please.
Next one. To direct the city manager to review the street repair plan for District One and refocus on streets that are in major dire need of repairs, such as the limits of District One, by where the Home Depot is at. The Home Depot in Bowen Park, behind that Home Depot is the city, District One. A lot of those streets are in dire need of repair, including but not limited to Chalborne Street, Sreeny, Lasagna Avenue, Morris and others that are in terrible condition.
Okay, so I think this is in our repayment last time we have led. Maybe this can be including into the report about when those three will be repaid. Okay, so nobody against this? Nope, okay, we move on, next one, this is number six.
Can I clarify that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure that we're clear. So that one is to look at updating what is called the pavement management plan, the PMP?
Yes.
To add those streets?
I think, so I think it's to look at what we have now and, and there's a list of streets on that list. So it's to say, wait a minute, maybe this street doesn't need to go first. Maybe the one right here does and it's, this one's more in worse condition than that one. And so we should really be expecting these streets to determine what should be going first.
It was, okay, so the Mother May is to bring back what that, what that process would be because that was done by a consultant. And so for us to have that PMP relooked, we'd have to hire the consultant. So we're bringing back a report saying to relook at these streets, this is what that process would look like?
City staff can go, can go drive there?
No, what, okay, just really quick, it, we done this before, so now we don't discuss about this, okay? I think he's clearly say, those three is in the poor condition. City looking to when could we pay those three? That's very simple.
Okay.
So let's get it done, okay? And, and, and I saw at those three, we went to that home, you sit in the car and we looked at those three, this one is three, this and that, it's horrible, okay? And it's not represent the West Covina, that should be repaved and for those people pay taxes and this and that. And that should be into, to be into our project. And I think we are doing the District One paving based on the map. So those three should be looking to, is that including, okay, and this repayment project? Okay, am I right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to the next one, please.
Next one, request that the city manager work with staff and the city attorney's office to find ways to want, to run council meetings more efficiently to ensure all residents have a voice and to report back to this council by the first council meeting in March.
March? It's too late. Let's do it January. Okay, okay, so ASAP, I want to, okay, I want to revise to, okay, friendly amendment to do ASAP numbers.
Staff said they need it till March, but.
If you can do it, we can do it in January, we put it in January, so. I only have a twelve months, okay, so, so it's March, I only have seven months left. I want to do this.
Bring it back to the second meeting of January.
Yes, thank you, okay, very good, okay, then I will support that, okay? And to reform, to make it more prime efficient and the city look into how we make sure, okay? And everybody have a chance to, to discuss. You want to say something? No? Okay, wants, anybody against that?
No.
No, he just want to look into the way we are running our city council meeting and to make it much more efficient, that's what he requests. Okay, and city you can bring back the suggestion and we either decline or approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so for clarification with efficiency, does that entail shortening time of, of speakers for all, for all communications?
I don't, I don't know what the report's gonna be, that's why I'm asking staff to come up with.
Okay.
Whatever idea they have.
Thank you.
Staff have to research, I think you want them to compare with all the city, how to run the city council. Because our city council meeting possible, we haven't done anything. I done this nine years, we haven't changed anything. So we want to continue or like this, if everybody agree or we want to see compare with other city to make it more efficient. It's just a report, okay, I think, anybody against that? Okay, no, okay, just again, city looking to and bring back to us, it's a mother may I, okay, next one, please.
Okay, this one, number eight, I think it's number eight, okay, so to direct.
We went to half already, okay, thank you.
To direct the city manager to include in the upcoming parks plan with staff to develop a plan for Orangewood Park that will include reimagining that park as Orangewood Sports Center that will integrate the West Covina Hockey Ring to the general public use, developing youth programs for that ring and pathway that is accessible to the whole park, including renovations to the soccer complex, skate park, hockey ring, to incorporate all programs for public use. This project should be called in the parks plan, the Orangewood Sports Center Community Dream Project to also include major enhancements for the disability community, ensuring inclusivity in this park's specific plan, making it the first park in the city of West Covina to be fully accessible.
Okay, and I think it's a great idea, okay, but you need another money? Okay, so maybe you can help us from state to get some grant, okay? But I think, I, I, I would support this to, because the hockey ring, a lot of people doesn't even know we have a hockey ring right there. And that is such a good facility owned by the city. Okay, so if we can kind of for the including the promotion and the lose up for people can use because taxpayer pay for that. And I think you're talking about the skate park and how to make it open in the front so people can see from the street, so you open it up. open it up, so you don't have all this graffiti, homeless and, uh, and stuff over there, so as long as they have a light, and they have an open space that people can see through, okay, I think that will really have people to willing to use, because if you say, uh, uh, okay, and Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Uh, no, it's with you, um, in regards, I know we sat in a subcommittee together a while back in regards to Orangewood, uh, skate parks, um, we've made some recommendations, and they're supposed to bring certain things back to us, which they never have, so I know that one's already in the works, because the skate park, I mean, it's obviously in ruins, and it's not even ADA compliant, and there's not even a way to enter without literally jumping in, so, um, that was already in the works, but we never got that one back, uh, with the updates. But that's in conjunction with his mother may I.
Are you making a mother, and may I for staff to update you on that?
Yeah, uh, uh, I think this is, uh.
In conjunction with yours.
Yeah, I think that District One in that areas really have a lot of, uh, facility, a lot of amenity to offer, and that we just need to kind of, uh, put it together, and, uh, especially they, we have Orangewood Swimming Pool, okay, that once upon time owned by the city, and now, uh, myself and, uh, Brian Gutierrez will be the school liaison, and , uh, we talk about how we can u- utilize the swimming pool in the summertime, okay, so we really, in that neighborhood, would be a proud, okay, and, uh, sports center for West Covina, and I don't, I don't think anybody against this, right?
No.
Okay, very good, I think this is a great idea, and we can entice our city and, uh, attract resident to utilize that neighborhood and all those facility, and, and, and to call it a sports center, or Orangewood Sports Center, or West Covina Sports Center, I think it's a great idea, I think we can, and fix up, but, uh, we need to get idea first, and estimate how much, and let's find the funding, a grant, otherwise we'll waste, okay, all the expectation, but we need to do this ASAP, because time cannot wait for us, and again, I only have a twelve months, so I have to hurry up to get this thing done.
Well, you know, hurry up.
Okay, and next agenda, please?
Okay, next one, for the city manager to review the traffic committee's rules and bylaws regarding committee members and report back to the council on any recommendations.
Mi- Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that one.
I don't understand either, can you repeat yourself?
We need a new, can we get a new mic? That's getting out. For the city manager to review the traffic committee's rules and bylaws regarding committee members and report back to the council on any recommendations. So the traffic committee, according to our city attorney, has bylaws, and so I'm asking the city manager to review the traffic committee's rules and bylaws regarding, uh, current committee, or the committee members in general, and to report back to the council on any recommendations.
Uh, I, I, I think you want to say how we set up the traffic committee, currently, and the last time, we have a police in the voting, okay, that's totally incorrect, okay, because you cannot be a referee, at the same time you are a player, okay, so, so I think I discussed with, uh, uh, Captain Tony Gutierrez, he agree about possible, we need to make sure our traffic committee is formed by maybe even committee member.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I, I agree, and, uh, and councilwoman, that, uh, Mayor Protem, that he Lopez Viado?
No, I was, uh, thank you, mayor, that, I was gonna say the same things that goes in line with yours, but, you know, since I've been in council, I've had some residents who has shared that they want to attend the traffic committee meetings, but it's, it's so too early.
Too early.
And so it doesn't give the opportunity to those who really want to attend, so that in conjunction with, uh, Councilman Gutierrez, uh, they could probably also look at the time, because the community can't.
Uh, I think, uh, we need to, uh, look into the reform, the traffic committee.
Yeah.
Who is a voting, uh, uh, members, okay, and I need to remove the police out of that voting member, okay, and, uh, at the same time, uh, we need to change the time, so community member, you can see, a, a lot of people is, they, they, their concern is the traffic, 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 and the traffic con- concern is safety. So two thing, okay, I think it's one, is a tree fire hazard, second thing, traffic, I think there's people really want to make sure they could, this feel safe. So anyway, and, uh, anybody against that? If none, okay, this is a great idea, that the city looking to the reform of the traffic committee, including a member, okay, plus the time, the schedule of the meeting. Go ahead, city manager.
Add to, add to it, but, um, Tuesday seemed to be very busy, we have traffic committee, community services, and planning commission, so maybe, um, we can look at, a little bit more cohesively at all the commissions to see the timing, um, uh, just a thought, I know it's.
No, it, it put a different day, okay, and you don't have, squeeze all in the Tuesday.
Yeah.
Tuesday just too busy.
Yeah, and, and, um, and we're emphasizing traffic committee, because they're the backbone of determining when these signs are going up, when things get happening, and people are dying on our streets, and this council no longer wants that to happen, and we're gonna hold people accountable, and that's why we wanna report back.
The flashing stop sign, uh, the intersection, the lot of, uh, stop signs now working, the not, no longer flashing, okay, some issue, this allow, who is responsible for that, and I think this is all address will be, we just want a safe city, okay, we don't make sure, okay, we want to move on, the next agenda, so nobody against, right? Okay, very good, thank you so much, okay, next one, please?
Next one, to assure transparency and accountability to the residents of West Covina, I make a council request, the city manager work with the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office to present back to the council by no later than the council meeting on January twenty-first, the current list of required contractors to report on FPP, FPPC Form seven hundred, conflict of interest, and the current list of staff and officials required to file Form seven hundred.
Um, this, this is a little, this is more like attorney issue, uh, city attorney, since you haven't talked about anything, this is, dun, 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 our city attorney.
What do you want me to say?
Hey, you get paid the big part, it's about time for you to say something.
Good warning.
Yeah, we can do that, we already, we already, we're planning on bringing that in January, uh, I know, I know, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez wanted to, uh, show some transparency and some accountability, and wanted to state that as a request, so we'll bring it back in January.
Okay, and is, uh, you happy with that?
Yep.
Okay, very good, and then, uh, we approve with, uh, city attorney looking to, this is more like attorney issue, okay, being FPPC and this and that, and, uh, don't know, we don't know anything about is that conflict entry or this and that, so, 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 so let's move on, next one.
Yeah.
It has been approved.
Yeah, so bring it back January twenty-first, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, next one.
Next one now, um.
What number is that?
Eleven.
This is the eleventh one.
Yeah.
Man, I would think about fifteen already.
I think.
Okay, number eleven.
Some of my numbers are off, so.
Okay, that's okay, number eleven, please.
Okay, number, next one, um, the final requir, oh no, sorry, that's not the final, sorry, uh, to, the next one is to request that the city manager work with the West Covina Police Department in establishing more CCTV cameras throughout city hall and the council chambers. Both residents, staff, and council members deserve to feel safe. Please report back to this council by the second meeting of February on potential funding sources to make this happen.
By February, why not January?
Uh, city staff need a time to find the funding.
You're too generous. Okay, and then, hold on, okay, so you want, um, okay, looking to, uh, where to put the camera, okay, in the parking lot, and in the, in the.
Throughout, yeah, throughout.
Throughout the, the community room, and all the walkway, to, okay, make sure we have a camera coverage, and, uh, I wanna add on here, because, uh, last year, I think, a year, more than a year ago, talk about the metal detector, detector, okay, and, uh, we approve, but nothing going on, so we want to know, is that will be including, okay, or we don't need it, or what, okay, because right now I can see time is changed, okay, and a lot of thing happening, and that we wanna make sure we, we done our duty, but we don't get mad over here, so, so safety is everybody's concern, so anyway, and, uh, so we want to bring back two thing, including the, a year ago, the mother may I, regarding the metal detector, detector, okay?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'll add to my request, that that should also include funding sources for metal detector.
Yeah, and we see, we can get a funding source and a camera, and, uh, any, anybody against that?
No, but, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, um, councilman.
Uh, in friendly support of what, uh, uh, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado asked, uh, asked in the past with cameras in the parks with, with that, could, could that be added to this, because she asked for that previously, that, we have not heard back.
I, I don't stand, okay, I want to focus as city council and the city hall first, okay, and let's get his thing first, okay, so anybody against this? No, okay, so we go to the, okay, city manager to look into, okay, and, uh, camera, and, um, yeah, and, okay, no, okay, this is the first one, about the city, city hall area, so this is your mother may I, and now, we go to the next one, it's about the park, okay, so city looking to, we have a sixteen park, okay, so do we have a budget to put so many camera in the sixteen park, or what? I think we talked about that a long time ago, yes, and the city to look into, do we have a budget? If we cannot put so many camera, can we put at least in the parking lot, because we have a bad thing happening in the pa- parking lot, can we, uh, install a one or two, so, so you are under surveillance, okay, with the, the, the signage, the post, okay, and then, then possible including our community room? Again, this is a separate, okay, two, one is a city hall, uh, that's from, uh, Brian Gutierrez, and then they have another one that is from, uh, Councilman Aldi Canto, and combined with, uh, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, uh, years ago, regarding the park camera and budget and, uh, and installation.
Exactly.
Okay, uh, next one, please?
The next one is to, for the city manager to work with the chief of police to find ways to, uh, to present to the council the current status of the West Covina Police Department's hope team, and ways that the city could work to, to get more resources to expand that team.
Okay, uh, and so you want to, city, we currently, we have, uh, a lot, okay, uh, La Cada, okay, La Cada, and the work with, uh, and we pay what, half a million dollars, a quarter million dollars, so, and include a hope team, so you want to, city to look into how to expand the hope team?
Yeah, so I wa- I want the police department and, and the city manager to come back to the council and, and tell us an update on the current status of issues going on in our city with the homeless people, and also, uh, and also, wh- what resources are any moving forward, so we can work on grants.
Okay, and do you have a due date?
Uh, the second meeting of March. You want it sooner?
Uh, city manager, what day you think you can handle this?
Let me go through the list right now.
Yeah, you have a lot of, you, you have a laundry list.
How about we bring it at the, the soonest available, considering all the other may I, mother may I, no later than.
Second meeting of April.
No later than that.
Okay, no later than the second meeting of April.
If I were you, I would say January, okay, so, okay, no compromise, January, work, work through the holiday. Okay, next one, okay, yeah.
With that one, if, again, a friendly amendment, or not an amendment, but just, uh, as a caveat that, not caveat, but we, we, we should make sure to look into the new provisions relating to measure A money that was just, with, since the voters have passed measure A, how we will, we'll tap specifically into that for the hope team.
Agree, okay, and, uh.
Yeah.
On the new measure A, my understanding, due to the charges, fifty cent, all sales tax, and they go to population, and this time, I think they say a portion of money will be based on the population and give to the city, am I right, city attorney? Yes or no?
Tom's mic's not working.
Yes or no?
He say, yes, okay, so, so, so anyway, and, city, uh, city manager to look into the expansion of, uh, all the, the, the current hope team, uh, regarding their, uh, operation, and then, and also looking to the measure A, the new one, I think it's thirty-six, uh, thirty-three, okay, that we can get a, a, a piece of the funding and to service our homeless population. Okay, uh, this is approved, and what number is that?
Thirteen.
Number thirteen.
Okay, next.
We almost there.
Yeah, almost there. The next one, to direct the city manager to work with the West Covina Police Department to establish ways for addition, oh, so it sounds like someone crashed out there, to direct the city manager to work with the West Covina Police Department to establish additional resources for the neighborhood watch program. Please report back by the second meeting of March.
Um, so you want the police to give city manager report back to us regarding neighborhood watch program?
Uh, I wanna know what, what current, what current resources are we providing to that program, and what's, and we could figure out from there what additional resources it will need moving forward.
Uh, I, I think this is a, uh, I think this is a, uh, good, uh, mother may I, why? Uh, I have, uh, neighborhood, uh, neighbors in the different area, they're asking about how can they pitch and put a camera, okay, and that possible neighborhood watch, okay, can talk to about what can, can they put some kind of the neighborhood, they're in their, on their property, not the city property, and, uh, with surveillance, okay, into their street, so they don't get hit on the graffiti, or currently, we have a lot of, uh, break-in, okay, and, uh, so, and we want to make sure, okay, to reduce any of theft, uh, okay, burglary, that kind of a situation.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, yeah, and, and what I've seen is that we actually may have established neighborhood watch groups, but we're not providing them signage for their streets or stickers.
Resource, resource, we, we need to create.
That's important.
Our resource or our information with, uh, high tech, or some of the new technology to help them, and, uh, so they can purchase, and, and helping with the, the police department. Uh, there is Councilman Canto, you wanna say something, or no?
No, not.
Okay, very good, so anybody against this? Okay, no, number fifteen.
The final one.
Dun, 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 dun.
Dun, 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 dun. For the city manager to work with the traffic engineering to, for the city manager to work with the traffic engineering department to find solutions to, to reduce speed on Workman Avenue and Orange Avenue. Reduce, find solutions to reduce speed, if, if that's adding stop signs, if that's adding speed bumps, we're in a newer century of time where.
Uh, this, this, thank you, okay, I think this is a traffic engineer issue again, uh, and the, the two thing is, uh, 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 okay, and, uh, how can we reduce the speed, possible there will be a traffic enforcement again, so, but anyway, this is more like a traffic engineer or traffic committee, uh, okay, uh, issue, so I don't know this what the mid, mother may I, is this, okay, you want, you want the city to transfer all this information to our traffic committee to look into, okay, because this is more like the engineer.
Yeah, it, it says to, for the city manager to work with traffic engineering to find solutions.
Okay, anybody against this? Nope, okay, number fifteen, approve, you, you, you on the row, okay?
Yeah.
You want add one?
I have one question, uh, for city staff, do we have a, a, a ordinance or a rule saying that we are now allowed to have speed bumps in our streets?
There's a, there's a policy based, um, on, uh, engineering standards when a speed bump may be installed or not, and we can share with, share that with the council when we bring the report back.
Is it city policy, or?
Um, it's not a silly.
Oh, it's called, the one thing is this, the street belong to public, my understanding, and the street belong to everybody.
Yeah.
And you wanna put a speed bump, you might have some resident, see, with damage their car, they don't want a speed bump.
Yeah.
So this is nothing, this not like a private street, people can put a speed bump, and this is a public street, belong to the taxpayer, okay, and it's, it cannot be only few resident, and unless you have all the residents sign, and plus, okay, do they have any of, uh, our city to look into, do we have any again, the issue against the law to, you, you bump, you might have a liability, somebody damaged a car, they will sue the city, so there's a couple of issue, really have to look into it, I have been request by, uh, resident about the speeding issue, but I think, uh, let's go back to, uh, enforcement issue again, if we have a, uh, more of, uh, police officer, okay, traffic enforcer, and, uh, they standing over there, or they have a motorcycle, and this and that, it really was lower the speed, is again, again, go back to enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, so my understanding that in the past, the cities done nice speed bumps in every street in West Covina, because they said that was, it was, uh, making the fire trucks move slower, um, my, my only thing was is that my, my vision is not speed bumps, but my idea, it will be to put some sort of rubber stripping on the ground where vibrates the car, so when a car's speeding, it doesn't fly up, it vibrates the car, and so, um, I will, I will like, I will like to make my final mother may I, for the city, for the city staff, city manager.
You already exist your limit. Okay, number sixteen, okay, and, uh, um, city, okay, and the city looking to the speed bump issue, and, uh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna share, so our pol- the policy that we abide by is, um, street must have a maximum posted speed limit of twenty-five, so if it's above that, then, uh, we don't recommend, uh, speed bumps on those streets, but you're talking about the vibration.
I, I don't like speed bumps either, so my vision as a. I don't like speed bumps either, so my vision as a more modern technology, it's actually rubber stripping that goes on the ground now.
Okay, and we're done with the Mother May I?
So if you could bring, if you could bring that back in the second meeting of March.
Okay, and Councilman Kento?
I, I have one.
You want the other one? So we compete each other right now, yeah? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's, it's, I'd like to ask that, that we instruct the city manager to instruct the police chief to reinvigorate our, our efforts to solicit volunteers from the community to expand what used to be called the seniors helping our police program or shop. And that includes reinvigorating Citizens Academy, which we had, and also expand, well, this is Brian Gutierrez, Councilman Gutierrez has thought, when we talked recently about the age, looking into the possibility of, of, of expanding the age, so that way we can have more volunteers participating in that program to relieve the sworn personnel.
Okay, I think you, you, you talking about a senior police volunteer.
Yes.
Okay, and I remember before the pandemic, we have the senior, okay, and the volunteer the police department that deliver our package, okay? And right now it's kind of burden our, okay, Assistant City Clerk Lisa to kind of nice to deliver all the paper to us. And I think it's kind of overburden herself to do everything and sometimes deliver the paper. But as, as I remember before, it's always senior, okay? And they're very proud to write, okay, two of them ride patrol car and they come to us. And I remember we have that. So I, I agree, I think we should look into the bring back the volunteer police, okay, civilian police officer, okay, or, okay, the staff. And as a volunteer, they have retired, they, they want to contribute, okay? And we have that program, okay? I just want to share with Councilman Kento, we have that program. Maybe we need to reactivate with our police department, that's why you say, right?
Yes, but also to expand the age, age to not just for seniors or people over forty or whatever it is, but also people of, who are responsible, who pass background checks of, of any, any age.
So, okay, anybody against that?
No, no, and I'll just say, I think this is a, I think a model program to look at is the LA County Sheriff's Department's Volunteer Force as well.
Talking about sheriff?
The Sheriff's Department has volunteers on patrol as well, so.
I would think, yeah. Okay, so city managers, you got everything now? Okay, I don't know if it's twenty-five or thirty, you have.
I hear like fifty-five.
Okay, I know. And you have something? Okay, Councilwoman Diaz has another Mother May I, yeah, oh my. It's a very productive night.
Well, we talked about cameras in the parks, but I know we talked about more lighting at the parks, and we really do need lighting in the parks, so. I don't know if you want to add that to the other Mother May I, or if this is a separate?
We have an update for you.
And this Mother May I to city looking to all the park into, okay, and working, a lot of area need light, okay, especially now, okay, so dark and especially playground. And this is, oh, we have a sixteen park, and the city looking to, to have all the park regarding the needed area to install light, am I right? Okay, this, anybody against that?
No.
Hold on, hold on, just finish. Okay, so everybody approve, okay? And then this is, this add on your homework, okay, for your holiday. Okay, yes, Councilmember Gutierrez?
I'll, I'll say to council comments, actually.
Okay.
We have council comments after, right?
The last one, don't, don't have a fifteen comment. Okay, so anyway, just combine to one, okay? And I know you can see city manager face get longer and longer now. This is, this is going to be, hey, you have a new city council and everybody excited and try to help improve our city. And I, I want to thank, okay, and all the city council participate, okay? And try to find all the way. And I know the possible burden, okay, is our city staff, but this is the issue that been lingering, and I want to thank, okay, Councilmember Gutierrez looking into all this and improve from all the city council member. And any other, last, last time, going one, going two, do you have any other council? And city manager, you have all the, all the, I don't know, twenty, the Mother May I?
Yes.
But some of them is kind of combined to each other, okay? So you can just put it together, and let's get this thing down the road and to improve our city. Okay, now we move to, from the council member, Mother May I request, we go to the council member comment for this holiday season. I know you want to wish everyone, because we don't see, we don't have a meeting till January seven, okay? And during this time, okay, okay, we have a lot of thing to do with event and this and that. So who want to go first? Okay, again, you took all the spotlight already, you want more? Okay, let's have Councilmember Gutierrez go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Wu. I just want to say, I want, first, I want to say thank you to our city manager for working very hard with our Public Works Deputy Director Rauhu and all the maintenance workers from our public, for our Public Works Department. We, today, this, this, early this morning, and, and also West Coast Arbor, as early this morning, Orange Ward Park trees were extremely trim to make that park look beautiful again. This is a park that was falling apart, a park that is in desperate need of renovation. And today, with all their teamwork and hard effort, after I brought it to their attention, after they actually went themselves to visit that park and see firsthand, they got a solution. They, they fixed it today. Those trees were cut, so good job, Paulina. The next one is, let's see, what else was there? I forgot.
Okay, then you want to give the?
I'll come back.
No comeback.
Okay, let me see, hold on, hold on, let me see. What was that?
You want to go home?
Um, no, I think, so it was that, okay, no, what, what Councilwoman Diaz said. Councilwoman Diaz mentioned the need for brightening our public parks. So I worked very diligently with our city manager, and we were able to secure a hundred and seventy-six LED light fixtures that are coming to our city in early January for free to replace many of our parks' LED fixtures and lighting. So our parks will be beautiful and brighten up very soon.
Yeah, thank you so much, and the donation from the entity that they're willing to give us all this donation to improve our park. And I think the park, some of the park, they need a light pole, okay? And some to replace the light.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you so much, and anyone want to talk about any other comment?
And I just have one more thing to say.
Okay, last one.
Sorry, my last, because I'm not coming back, I mean, coming back to this comment. But yeah, my final, my final thing is to say, I want to wish all the residents of this district one a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for the blessing you have entrusted in me to be your representative. Today, you seen firsthand my commitment to make our community better, and I will continue to work hard to accomplish that. And I thank my colleagues for believing in me and making this happen today, so thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, and we can see the passion, we can see the hard work. This is, this is a lot of hard work to put this together, and, and the people can see you don't show change them. You, first day, you sit over here, you prepare, and you discuss with city manager, okay? And I know she has a duty and work on all this together and make the thing happen for us, so. But we want to thank you, okay, for all the input, and then we can see the city in good hand with your add into our enforcement. And next one, okay, who want to speak? Okay, and Kento, okay, Councilman Aldi Kento, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I love about this is, though we, we also represent our individual districts, we, we've talked about this tonight, that we represent this entire city, and we are really passionate about supporting this entire city, which is just incredible. We have such magnificent staff who are working very hard in support of our residents, and the residents who are just continually engaged with us, it has been incredible. And so I just wanted to say, as this is our last for the, for 2024, a thank you to our residents for, for all of, everyone's engagement and for continually coming to us and, and expressing concerns and, and giving us the opportunity to be responsive and then to facilitate support from staff. It's just incredible, and also my love to our colleagues. Just really, this is just really, I'm just so appreciative just for our ongoing working relationship and closeness, and it's really wonderful. And lastly, to wish everybody the happiest of holiday seasons, just love everybody so much, and we just have so many wonderful, good things together. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Kento, and the next one, okay, Mayor Protem, Letty Lopez Viado?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I just wanted to say thank you very much to each and every staff of West Covina. I mean, from, to the top to the very bottom, all of your, for all your hard work throughout 2024. It truly shows, especially for all the community events that has been produced. They are at exceptional level, and as you can see, they just grow and grow and grow, just like the, let it snow. It, it outgrew the small area, and there was a lot of people. And the amazing part of that is we have people that are coming from outside cities, even our residents. Residents appreciate it, and they can see what is being produced, and they appreciate that. And they're bringing their friends and family members over to our city. So of course, none of this could happen without all the hard work that each and every staff has done. So I thank you again for this whole year, and enjoy your break, you know, rejuvenate, spend time with family, friends, and hope everybody has a happy holiday, and we will see you all next year again for 2025 New Year, so thank you.
Thank you so much, and Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I am excited that in my district, we have had so many streets repaved or reslored, they look gorgeous, and I think that my constituents are really happy about that. And I also want to brag about what a beautiful park Cameron has become with our new sod that has been placed, and I'm really proud of that, and I want to thank our staff. Whoever made it happen, thank you. Thank you to all of you, because I know you guys work really hard to make us happy and trying to make our residents happy and trying to make our streets beautiful and clean. And I just want to thank you all, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and have a safe, safe Christmas and, and New Year. And looking forward to 2025 to make things even better, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz, and you want to say something? And Councilmember Gutierrez, I give you another chance, you okay? No, okay?
I'm all good.
You're all good. Yeah, I don't want to make sure, okay, you, you get everything out of your chest, okay? And, and again, as an honor to be mayor again, I want to thank all my colleague and the hard work, everybody pitching, and everybody kind of dedicate and happy and enjoyed the meeting. I think this is how we here for, and we help each other and to accomplish and to improvement for the, for the city. And I want to say this, okay? A lot of people always saw it, okay, that our city get prettier, prettier every day, okay? Of course, we still have a long way to do cleaning, the shopping car, some graffiti and some on the freeway, that is even is not our jurisdiction, and our city staffs just go over there and try to paint over because this at, at the West Covina area. So, so you can see, okay, we just want to improve our city, we want to have a proud city. And you know, you go to Dry Azusa Avenue, everybody say, wow, it's so pretty. So here, I want to ask city manager, when we can finish? Okay, well, everybody say so pretty, and I understand, okay, the light pole on the ground, so pretty, but potentially vandalize and a theft, but, but no matter what, we need to finish up the entire Azusa from north side, Walkman, go to the south side to the church, that's the West Covina area. We really want to bring up this of, okay, sense of a holiday that we care, and we want to bring joy to people when they driving in the West Covina Azusa Avenue, okay? And, and we need to finish up, okay, what we started. Okay, right now we have one portion with demo that look very nice, and how we want to do the rest. And the exit of Azusa, you can see that beautiful, okay, canopy with color LED light, look very, very attractive, okay? And how we carry on, continue, and to make all the design more unique and more in harmony while then here's this and there, there. So hopefully, we can get all the similar design from here to there. And I think we need to finish up all this lighting and to finish up. I know Christmas coming at a corner, but we still have other New Year coming up, and we still have Valentine, Valentine Day coming up, and then we have Spring Festival coming out, and et cetera, et cetera. So that light can continue to carry on, to cheer people up. So here is our job over here, the job over here to bring the improvement for our city. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I'm honored to be your mayor again. I want to thank all my colleague, especially, I want to thank all the staff. Without the staff, that city cannot have a improvement like this. With the staff willing to help each other, and we are willing to support the staff, and let's continue to work together, united together, united we stand, and bring this proud city, bring our resident together. So Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I wish everybody have a magnificent 2025. Any other want to say anything else? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion adjourned.